President. And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. This evening, I will defer to Chair Daniels, but I would like to note for this public hearing record, and I will say this again during our legislative session to correct the meeting minutes. So during our last legislative session, I referred Resolution 37 of 2022 to the Building and Housing Committee. And pursuant to our council rules, Rule Number 15, matters relating to the city's entitlement of CDBG funds are under the purview of our Community and Economic Development Committee. So I, although both committees and the dual director work very closely together, this should have been referred to Community and Economic Development. So I will now defer to Chair Daniels to begin our hearing.
Thank you. Um, do you mind introducing yourself, your role in the process, and then going over Resolution 37?
Sure. I am Denise Hill. I serve as the Director of Housing and Community Development, Economic Development here for the city. And I am here to present the annual action plan for CDBG and ESG out of DBHD, or Department of Building and Housing Development.
Are you ready to?
I am, yes. So before you all, you should have PowerPoint slides, and I'll just move through the program year of 2022 entitlement funds. On the first slide that you see here, there is a breakdown of the difference between the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. And the consolidated plan that we're currently in runs from 2018 to 2022. The new con plan is due for October 1st of 2023. That is when the 2022 program year ends. The annual action plan goes effective October 1st, 2022, to September of 23. And then the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPER, will be due December 31st, which is 90 days after the program year ends. So the federal fiscal year is October 1st to September 30th. So essentially, the con plan is the five-year strategic plan. It's a high-level overview. The annual action plan is the yearly blueprint, or the specific plans by year. And then the CAPER is the review to measure if the goals were met. On the next slide, I will draw your attention to the column under Program Income column, which then gives us the total, but I just wanted to draw a highlight to that.
Before you proceed, are all of these documents in line for people to follow?
This will be tomorrow, the actual plan, the full plan that you have as Exhibit A. So I wanted to draw attention to the Program Income column. Program income is only generated through our Housing Rehabilitation Program, the loan repayments that we get back from individuals who receive a forgivable loan. If they need additional to what the maximum amount is, they are able to take out a loan directly with DBHD and pay it back to the city. On the next slide, under Citizen Participation, I just wanted to note that any public comment that is received, it will be added to Page 30 before the annual action plan is submitted to HUD. So any feedback that we get from residents of the city will be added to the actual plan. And then tonight is the public hearing. On Slide 5, under the Priority Plans and Needs, I'll move through the six priority needs that were established in the consolidated plan. Community Development and Public Improvements, such projects are the Chutes and Ladders project, the Section 108 loan repayment. Annually, $240,000 comes out of CDBG to go towards repaying that back. The last payment is August of 2026. And then ADA accessible curb cuts along the Sixth Street corridor, or any ADA accessible projects for the city to positively impact the residents. Number two, under Public Services, this funding goes directly to nonprofit organizations who provide services to the community. Four workshops were held between May 16th and 17th. More than 50 individuals attended those workshops, and we had 32 applicants. Those applications are in the process of being scored now. The deadline was June 17th. And then recommendations for funding will be presented to you all in September. For number three, under Blight and Demolition, we work directly with the Bureau of Codes to demolish blighted properties in the city, and CDBG contributes $224,000. And that's approximately five homes that we will be able to take down with that amount for emergency demolition. Moving to the next slide, the fourth priority need is increase and preserve affordable housing. So under our Housing Rehabilitation Program, $359,066, that would go towards approximately 18 homes at $18,000 each, where we provide assistance to low-to-moderate homeowners to cover roof, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, to bring the house up to code. It's no cosmetic rehabilitation to the homes. And then under Home Development for that, we have contributed funds for YMCA, their Cornerstone Project, Tri-County Housing, their Mount Pleasant Project, Bethel Village, and TLC. So that goes towards the construction of affordable homes. All of those projects are new affordable homes to be purchased by residents. Number five, to reduce homelessness, that's ESG funding, or Emergency Solutions Grant, that goes, that's funding that has to go directly to homeless providers. So some of the organizations that we've worked with historically and have applied this year are YWCA, Greater Harrisburg, Shalom House, Christian Churches United, and Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness. The sixth is Administration. A percentage of all of the pots of funding go towards salaries and equipment operations to run the. Moving on to the actual plan goals, on this one, you will see, so for each of the six needs that were identified, the six goals that were established, so Community Development and Public Improvements, the goal is 20,000 persons to be assisted. Public Services, 2,500 persons to be assisted. Blight and demolition, again, about five homes to be demolished. Increase and preserve affordable housing, you'll see three households for homeowners. Those will be new homeowners to be able to get homes, and then 25 houses to be rehabilitated. And then two households for rental units to be constructed. Reduce homelessness, 500 persons assisted, and then for homelessness prevention, 15 persons assisted. On the next slide, this is a breakdown of each of the line items that are permissible under CDBG, home, and ESG, and how all of those funds would be spent. And then moving on to next steps, we're in the public comment period right now. Tonight is the public hearing, and then the HUD submission is due to HUD on August 16th, no later than that. If it is not submitted to HUD by that time, the funds would be recaptured by them. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Yeah, do you, it's a little out of purview, but do you know, um, do we, having repaid as much as we have on the Section 108 funds, do we have access to any portions of those funds, or do we have to wait until we're fully paid off?
I do not know the answer to that, but I can get it, and I'll report to Mr. Parker to give to all of you.
Um, so, um, in terms of the public comment period, could you mention what steps and opportunities were there for people to submit public comment besides today's hearing?
So it was put in the Patriot News, which is required by HUD, and then anyone can contact my office at any time to ask any questions, go through the full plan. Like I said, this was not made available until you all got a chance to see it. But via email, we have a team box that they can email, they can call in, or they can stop it.
So I think, um, I'll just open it up to my fellow council members and do the questions they have. I'll start to, my far right, Congressman Ross.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I'm still kind of looking through it, so I'll pass it on, and I may have some questions as we go. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Hudson.
Just because it's been an issue in the past, how do you, how do you feel about applicants and the compliance and of the grants?
So in a preliminary review of applications, compliance won't be an issue because of the current staff that I have in place. However, getting applicants to a passable score, there will need to be some technical assistance, to be very candid with you.
Okay.
We'll be working with them. We have a workshop series that we plan on putting together to be able to get applicants ready in the future for future applications, but also there will be a requirement for those that are recommended to be funded and actually receive the funding to meet with our staff on a much more regular basis than what some of them are used to, coming out of DBHD.
Oh, that's good. I appreciate that. Do you, do you believe you have sufficient staff capacity to put on these other additional responsibilities?
Yes, yes. So we plan to do them a hybrid model. They would be available to come in for a workshop, or also virtual workshops, but then staff will also go out to each individual organization that is funded or monitoring. Instead of one monitoring yearly, it'll be throughout the year.
Great. Bear with me, over the years, I've kind of had to keep up with all the regulations that changed a few times, but my understanding is we've had a lot of applicants come back to try to receive funding for essentially the same projects every year. My understanding for the HUD rules is that it has to, it has to change. They can't just apply for essentially the same project.
Correct.
Okay, and that is the case.
It has to be a new project or an expansion of a service, so they would have to be able to show what that expansion is.
Has the word got out, and do applicants understand that?
Yes, so that was drilled at the workshops. That if it is not new or an expansion, that it would not be eligible for funding.
Okay. Last question is, often when grants are given out, a lot of, and I believe the HUD regulations fixed this, but just, I think it'd be good for the public, most of the grants go towards services, not salaries, correct?
Correct, correct, yes.
Yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I apologize for my tardiness. I just have, I think, one question. As far as the applicants that you have received, are we seeing new applicants? I know a lot of the times we get the same, you know, applicants, year after year, year after year.
Yes.
So I know that was kind of something you said you were going to try to get the word out more, so have we seen more organizations come forward?
We have. So of the 32, more than half of them are new and have not applied previously.
Okay, that's good news. That's all I had. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I just had one question with the affordable housing portion. So you mentioned the YMCA, the Cornerstone Project, Bethel Village, TLC, and Tri-County. Do we know the total number of either units or properties that will be under that category with those projects?
I believe YMCA is four homes. Tri-County is three homes. Bethel Village is 49 units, and TLC, this might be 12 units, but I can verify how many is TLC.
Okay, I wasn't sure which phase of TLC, so okay, if you could please verify, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Just, just a couple of quick questions with respect to similar council, Council President Bowers' question about the affordable housing. You note the rental unit is constructed, and it's two households. Are we talking about just two units or two different properties that encompass a number of units?
So technically, it would be by HUD's definition, two households could be one unit, but two units.
Okay. So the rental units are just, we're just talking about two rental units?
Yes.
Not like a rental property, like if you would build a building, and you would have 14 units in it, we're just talking about two rental units. Okay. And then in terms of our demolitions, we're still doing all those in-house, or are we looking to contract out? Because I think just the 224 to get to five seems like, you know, a good cost per demo.
So Codes, I do know that they do a little bit of contracting outside, as well as these funds, or they have an internal team. So the CDBG funds would go strictly for emergency demolitions. So whether they contract or do inside, that would be determined with in Montgomery.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and I'm just glad to know we're getting closer to the finish line on the 108 loan repayment. It said 2026 was when we would have that last payment due.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you for being here this evening. What would qualify for the 18 homes, 18,000? As far as someone receiving that?
Eligibility for the applicant, they have to live inside of Harrisburg City proper, and they also have to be at or below the poverty line.
Would that be HUD? HUD, okay.
Yes, so based on their, their household size.
Okay.
Their gross income.
And with the nonprofits that are pretty much working with the initiative, what would be some things that you guys would be looking for so they could assist possibly in your mission?
In the actual organization?
Yeah.
So again, they have to be providing services in the city. They would also have to, one major focus in the application this year was their financial management. So in order to pass, they had to get a minimum score of 75. 30 points alone is all about financial fiscal responsibility, their ability to handle the funds. So those are things that we are looking for, that they could articulate, that if given the funds, that they would be able to, on the monitoring, on the backend, that they can handle.
And produce that, awesome.
And even if they do service the region, they would have to be able to document that the funds that are used from DBHD service individuals in the city and low to moderate income.
That's interesting. So if they service like the greater Dauphin County, they still would have to be very targeted just for this initiative?
Correct, correct.
Okay, no further questions. Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any? Could Mr. Grover give us a sense of timelines that are necessary? Give us a little bit of a process framework?
So going forward, there will be, this will come back as a resolution for a vote. I believe the Council President will be announcing when that'll be. Because the comment period actually closes today, you could not vote today, because all comments have to be added to the document. So those comments will be added, they will come back, and there will be a vote, I believe, on July the 26th. We'll come back, and there'll be a number of items that tonight roll over to that date with different deadlines, and it sort of fits all the deadlines that council has in one night for the summer.
So let's go ahead and open.
I had one question, Miss Councilwoman Daniels. Good evening, if I didn't say it to everybody, I'm sorry. For the number four item, increase and preserve affordable housing, I saw the goal for this year. Did you all meet the goal for last year?
We did not.
Okay.
And that is because, so for affordable housing, most of those projects, all of those projects actually are under the home development, so construction was completely halted. So it's actually by recommendation that the entitlement funds for this year could be, instead of opening up a new application for home, could go to help offset the current applicants to meet funding gaps, just because everything has changed and skyrocketed, so.
Okay, thank you.
So none of those projects have actually started. They haven't broken ground, but now they are in a position that they're ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me, Councilwoman Daniels. Thank you.
Yes, so I'll go ahead and open comments up to the public. Does anyone to the far right? Oh, I hate saying that expression. Would anyone to my right like to comment on this resolution? Anyone in the middle? Anyone to the left? Okay.
I'd say with that, you can adjourn the public meeting on this and roll into legislate or the work session for the. You have to adjourn it, not me.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we needed a motion or. Okay, I'll, let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and just a reminder to folks that there's still opportunity to comment on, on the plan as of right now, so please go ahead and submit your comments to Ms. Hill, so that we can incorporate them into the proposal. So, um, just rolling into work session, or?
I think that goes right.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hill, for being present tonight. Thank you, Chair Daniels, for leading the discussion for our public hearing. So the time is 5:54 PM.
I apologize. Actually, you do have to offer public comment period for, oh, we did that, never mind.
We did. We did a few times. Okay, so it's 5:55 PM. We will adjourn our public hearing, and we will begin our work session. I will defer back to Chair Daniels, as majority of the work is under our Community and Economic Development Committee. Chair Daniels?
Thank you, President Bowers. Okay, so first, we have the quarterly report from the Planning Bureau, who is here to speak on behalf of the Bureau. Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeffrey Knight. I'm the Planning Director of the Quick City.
So are you ready to go ahead with your report?
Yeah, so I'm not exactly sure how everybody, the other departments kind of have handled all of theirs. I know in many cases, they have probably a bit more quantitative data to provide. Our department is a little bit more kind of broad and holistic, and we don't necessarily have the same quantitative data, but certainly have, you know, a lot of qualitative work we've been doing throughout the community. I can provide some of the stats we have that we do track in the Planning Bureau. I don't have necessarily past years' figures against which to compare these, but I can kind of give a general sense of where this, where this, these statistics stand over on the greater long-term work that the Planning Bureau does here. So for the most part, at least personally for myself, it's myself and Jacob Bowen, the Deputy Director in the Department, and, you know, on a daily basis, we're doing anything from fielding calls to review permits to preparing case reports for either Planning Commission, or Harb resolutions, or Zoning Board, or City Council presentations. And we're also working with a number of different departments here within the city, anywhere from the Police Bureau to Grants, to Parks and Rec, all, you know, working on zoning violations, or developing letters of plan consistency for grants that go out. I know the Park Chutes and Ladders grant was mentioned a little bit earlier, and we worked with the Grants Administration and Parks on developing a letter of plan consistency to accompany that grant application. So in totality of all the permits and all the issues that have come across my desk this year, I have a total of 1,061 work log entries within my work logs. That's about 180 issues in a given month. And again, that can be anything from building permit to a, to a mercantile permit, to a question about zoning, to floodplain development review. So that's kind of a very broad statistic, but breaking that down a little bit further, this year, we, my department has reviewed 316 building permits, and so, you know, usually we only receive a subset of the building permits that are submitted to the Codes Bureau, whether if they're in a historic district, a floodplain, or the work identified requires some sort of zoning relief. So if they're proposing to convert a property from a single-family to. Mercantile permits, we've received 171 of those. And again, most of these permits that we're getting, we do a pretty quick turnaround. Jacob handles any sort of zoning review, and I'm usually reviewing the historic district or floodplain aspects. And in comparison to the last few years, I'd say we're probably looking up on a lot of those numbers, especially with the building permits themselves, those seem to have been coming in a lot more consistently, and I think that's, you know, due to the fact that there's a lot of work going on in the city, but also that our codes enforcement officers are really out in the community, making sure that they're identifying work that's going on, and that permits are being submitted for that work. And then finally, write-to-no requests, we have received 94 this year, and write-to-no requests are definitely up from past years. They tend to sometimes accompany zoning verification letters that, that entities will ask us for, if there's a property transfer, for example, or just looking into the history of a property, if there's like environmental assessments have been done, remediation work, underground storage tank, that nature. But occasionally, we get write-to-no requests for other issues as well, open building codes or violations of that, things of that nature. From our zoning and land development perspective, that's usually our Planning Commission, and then Zoning Hearing Board, or you guys, City Council here, we've received about 30 variance and special exception applications, 12 subdivision law consolidation and/or land development plans, and you'll be hearing two of those today, and then two street vacation requests. So I'd say that the numbers there are pretty consistent to what we've seen in the past. I think some of the land development plans that we have are a little bit more large in scope than we've seen in the past. Like in the past, we've had some conversions of existing office space, for example, to multifamily dwellings, but it's, we seem to be getting a bit more new construction, and so those take a little bit longer to review because of that aspect, such as traffic circulation or stormwater management, so that goes to CRW. So while I think the numbers are kind of steady, I think the actual reviews have been a bit more substantial in this regard. And beyond just the applications we've received so far, we've had a number of conversations with different development groups about various projects being considered here in the future that I anticipate we may be seeing submitted to the city over the next couple of months. So although those numbers are just for the applications we have now, I, you know, we've had various communications with development, developers on proposals, really throughout the city here, so I expect that to be a little bit of an uptick in the next few months. From our Harb perspective, that's our Harrisburg Architectural Review Board, and that's for all the exterior alterations in our historic districts here in the city. We've received 18 applications, which is a bit down actually from past years. I'm not exactly sure why that may be, but we've also identified, or in conjunction with the Codes Bureau, identified a bit more violations for work that hasn't been submitted to permitting. So we are working with those property owners, developers, to make sure Um, so, we are working with those, uh, property owners, developers, uh, to make sure that they're brought into compliance with our historic district regulations. Um, in addition to our, uh, formal certificate of appropriateness applications for Harb review, um, a couple other of the historic, uh, preservation issues we've dealt with here in this, in the Planning Bureau are, uh, Section one oh six reviews, um, and so that's a, uh, federal statute. Um, if there's any sort of federally funded, uh, or regulated activities such as, uh, telecommunications antennas or, uh, projects of that nature. Um, sometimes, uh, right away work, uh, will get, uh, Section one oh six review request from utility companies. Um, we'll be reviewing those for their impact on historic resources here in the city. We are currently at the tail end of a, uh, of a grant application that was evaluating the, uh, current condition of the Nineteenth Street Armory, uh, and perspective of future uses of that building, uh, that you all may be familiar with. Um, been in city hands for, I think, a couple decades now, um, and at various times has been used for storage. Uh, and the grant through the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission, uh, was designed to evaluate the condition, the existing condition, um, of the building, uh, any prospective environmental issues like lead paint or asbestos, and then potential future, uh, uses of the building. Uh, so I think, uh, our consultants on that, uh, are finishing up their final reports. And, uh, as part of that grant application, we submit quarterly reports to Pennsylvania Historical and Museum. Apprised of, uh, what is being, uh, done on that A. And then finally, uh, we completed the, uh, C L G Certified Local Government, uh, Grant Program Annual Reporting, uh, for twenty twenty-one. Uh, we are a C L G community, which means we can get assistance from P H M C on a number of different, uh, aspects, whether it's technical assistance, whether it's just, uh, reviews and guidance, uh, or whether it's going after various grants. Um, we're, our participation in that, uh, allows us access to those. Um, and every year, as part of our participation in the program, we have to do annual, we're kind of keep them apprised of how many C O A applications we have coming through, uh, what work we're doing, qualifications of our board members, et cetera. Additionally, we have, uh, obviously, a large number of floodplains here in the city, so, um, we've been doing a lot of floodplain, uh, development reviews, uh, in the city. We only have six formal documents that have come in, but there's been a lot of, uh, back and forth with various entities, um, property owners on, um, projects in our floodplains. And, uh, those can actually be fairly time-consuming, uh, reviews because there's a lot of engineering involved. Um, there's a lot of kind of evaluating, uh, minute specifics of individual projects and how they relate to, um, uh, FEMA guidelines, um, which, as you can imagine, is, they're pretty, uh, dense and thorough, so, uh, getting really into the weeds and evaluating how projects, uh, relate to those and ensuring their performance with those regulations, uh, is a pretty time-consuming matter. Um, and then finally, at the beginning of this year, um, as we do every year, uh, we have our annual recertification process through, uh, FEMA's, uh, Community Rating Systems Program. And what that program is, is that, uh, in, um, exchange for the state's participation in that program, uh, through which we, uh, regulate our floodplains in excess of FEMA's minimum standards, uh, owners of property in the floodplain get discounts on their flood insurance. Um, and so we're a level eight community at the ma- at the moment, which gives, uh, owners of property in our hundred-year floodplain a ten percent discount on their insurance, and owners of property in our five-hundred-year floodplain a five percent discount. Um, so, you know, that's a program, uh, through, that's kind of constantly evolving from, uh, FEMA's end. Um, and we're always working to improve our rating, to give a higher level of discount to, uh, owners of property in the floodplain. We have about twenty-two hundred properties and a lot of that is, you know, riverfront properties, but also, um, the properties along the Paxton Creek, um, floodplain and, like, Paxton corridor. Uh, so, uh, it's two kind of different disparate, um, areas of the city that are impacted by that, but it's something that we're always working to improve our, uh, ratings so that, uh, it helps out our property owners here in the city. And, um, aside from that, uh, some of the long-term planning issues, um, we have our, uh, the comprehensive plan, um, and, uh, kind of the spinoffs that come out of that, small area plans and zoning code update. Um, the comprehensive plan, uh, you know, as I, I kind of previously stated in, uh, presentations to City Council, uh, next steps that grow out of that are usually a zoning code update, uh, but then there's also small area plans. And, um, right now, uh, this year, we didn't have any, um, money in that line item, so we had no consulting monies in which to go after, uh, you know, work with a consultant and, uh, submit, uh, at least an R F P, uh, to begin a zoning code update, but that's something that the administration is, uh, looking to do next year. Um, so that'll be a focus next year of our, uh, work, kind of taking the comprehensive plan to the next level. Um, in addition, we're, um, I think anticipating our, uh, new Planner One starting sometime, hopefully, the next couple of weeks. And the first project of theirs, uh, will be to develop, um, the chapter maps, uh, or the maps for each chapter in the comp plan, and which will include underlying, uh, baseline data such as, um, you know, population density, stuff you can get in census, but also, um, data and statistics that we may collect, uh, here, uh, within the city itself, and then to use it to track projects that we're doing, such as the development projects that you all are reviewing, or, uh, grants that, uh, we may be af- going after in Park and Rec, for example. Um, because I know that was a big, uh, part of the discussion of that document last year, was making sure we had something that was public-facing, that was accessible to the public, but also something that council could use when considering, um, their future budget years, and to make sure that, uh, we're putting money towards meeting the goals of that document. Um, and so, our hope again is, um, once this new staff person comes on, uh, they'll be able to, uh, pick that, uh, pick up the ball with that and, uh, run. Um, and so we'll hopefully have something by, uh, the end of City Council's hiatus period this summer. Um, and then, I think the only remaining, uh, real issue is, um, the affordable housing legislation, um, that I know we've been working with, uh, Ms. Hill's department on, uh, to make sure we're kind of updating, uh, the, the, um, affordability metrics. I know there was, uh, you know, we have M F I and M H I, median family income and median household income throughout our, the various pieces of our legislation, and we kind of need to, um, bring that into, uh, conformance with each other so that they, so that we're using the same data metrics, uh, when working through our program and getting, uh, the actual, um, final documentation and formal process, uh, to submit for that pro- uh, program, uh, finalized in conjunction with, um, the Department of Housing and Economic Development. Um, and that's something that Jacob and I are working on, we've been doing some research, looking into some options, uh, for where we could go next as a, choosing between M H I and M F I. And I think, you know, we have some recommendations that we can present to the administration, to the council with what we think might, maybe is a, uh, better, uh, metric.
So, um, could you give us a little bit of a status update on kind of some of the, because you oversee quite a few different entities? Um, so can you give us, if, if you have them, like, updates on, like, the activities of the land bank, the vacant lot rehabilitation for the, of re, redevelopment of, I mean, I, I know you're partnered with them, not exactly overseeing them, but, um, the, the. Oh, there's so many of them, because you do, you're, you're.
Yeah.
It's pretty extensive.
Yeah, we work, uh, closely with a lot of them. I don't know that there's any necessarily review authority from my department over those, especially like their H R A. Uh, so that's kind of, they handle the land banking, um, and, uh, the vacant property reinvestment board, to my knowledge, has not been, um, active in a little while. So, I used to serve on that a few years ago, but, uh, no longer do, um, so I'm not sure what activities they may have. But, uh, we do work pretty closely with, um, H R A, uh, in discussion with potential developers on projects. I mean, they're obviously, uh, having developers reach out to them to say, "I'm interested in purchasing your properties from you, I'd like to do a project in there." And so, a lot of times, as part of that process, uh, they'll need to get a letter of plan consistency or a zoning verification letter, um, from my department, uh, either for H R A themselves or for a grant program that they may be going after, or maybe for a bank even, um, to get a better understanding of, you know, missibility of their, uh, project. Um, so we do work pretty closely with H R A, um, we usually get emails from Brian that'll say, you know, put us in contact with a potential developer, and we'll initiate discussions with them and, you know, talk to them about, um, what the process looks like. A lot of times, there's lot consolidations necessary, land development, um, aspects, sometimes there's street vacations, uh, sometimes there's zoning, uh, relief requirements. So, we try and work with them to outline what those all are and also to help them organize the process, because a lot of times, those are move on different timelines, and so identifying the best and most efficient way for those, uh, projects to move forward is something that's, you know, a big help to developers.
Um, and I think that's, if, for me in terms of questions regarding your report, um, I'll open it up to my fellow council members, uh, Councilmen Rawls.
Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, um, good evening, Director Knight. My allergies right now, my voice. Uh, I know you mentioned the matrix and medium household income, and we spoke up here, I think, I don't remember when, but it was speaking about Dolphin County, Dolphin Counties' income base, like, and what Harrisburgs is, and trying to make sure that when developers come, they understand that there is a different income base for Harrisburg as well as Dolphin County. Is that, um, I, I know we spoke about that being a part of information given to them, has that been given to them, has that been created yet, or what is the status on that?
Yeah, um, we definitely discuss it with, uh, developers when they come to us. Um, again, those, uh, those metrics are usually provided by the census and some of them are at the M S A level, some of them are more targeted. The more targeted ones tend to be a little bit more out of date. And so, one of the things, um, you know, one of the things we're looking at is maybe using HUD's, uh, F M R, Fair Market Rent, um, numbers. Uh, those are good for number reasons, they tend to be more current, um, and they also break things down by the number of bedrooms. So, uh, we're not just looking at what's the cost of, you know, affordability for a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, but studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three, four-plus. Um, and so HUD runs all these numbers, and they also factor in, uh, utility costs a lot of times. So, it tends to be a pretty comprehensive number, um, and it's something that the Housing Bureau is already working with, um, that, those statistics, um, and a lot of the work they do. So, it kind of dovetails nicely with, um, a lot of the, um, other kind of way of addressing affordability that we're doing here in the city. So, I think that's, that's what we're, I think that'll be a recommendation, is to use that, because it tends to, uh, be a little bit more expansive in terms of, um, you know, recognizing that a studio apartment is obviously cheaper to build than like a floor. Um, and so, that's something that, you know, we're happy to present to, uh, the, uh, council for, for your consideration.
Yes, please, thank you. That's it for me, Councilwoman Daniels, thank you.
Uh, no questions for you, then?
Good evening, uh, Director Knight, um, just one question, as far as your department, um, how's the staffing levels going? I know that you had a couple of open positions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so how has it gone with the hiring process?
Uh, so we just got through interviews a couple of weeks ago and, uh, selected a candidate, and, um, I believe, uh, she's going through the background check.
Okay, and which position is that for?
Uh, that's for the Urban Planner One position.
Okay, any for the, isn't it like a historic preservation?
Specialist, uh, yeah. Um, so I know the whole administration, there are a lot of vacancies, and so H R is having to, you know, kind of, um, schedule, uh, their interview processes, the background checks and stuff in a way that, you know, helps all the departments at the same time. So, uh, the goal was always to have the Urban Planner One position filled first and then, um, work on the historic preservation specialist position. In the meantime, I'm filling that role, um, so, uh, which I've done in the past, so it's definitely something I can handle. But we wanted to have the Urban Planner One, uh, position filled because it does a lot of, like, does more broad-based kind of support for both Jacob and I and the public, uh, when they're coming in. So, I think it's a bit more of a flexible position, and again, they'll be able to, uh, focus on things like, um, the maps.
All right, thank you, I'm glad to hear that you've got someone on the way, I can't wait to meet her. Thank you, that's everything.
President Bowers?
Thank you, uh, good evening, I just have, well, maybe one comment, not really a question, thank you for your report, I think it's helpful, um, to provide, to hear everything in numbers, I guess, because we see so many land development plans and wonder, well, how many did we take action on? I think, uh, the breakdown of numbers is helpful for me in discussion about the affordable housing legislation and the potential of adding the fair market rent. I think that would be helpful, I guess, I guess my only further comment would be, um, I know that with the legislation, we're very intentional about adding charts just to make sure that it was easily digestible for anybody that picked it up. So, if this is the route, um, that we, in manner in which we would like to amend it, my, um, suggestion would be to continue to add the charts. I think that would be helpful, um, just not only from a visual perspective, but just for, as a reader in general, to keep that consistency.
And, and we're working on updating, uh, our applications as well, whether it's the Harb application or the Land Development Plan. And one of the things we want to put at the Land Development Plan, um, you know, usually where you have the economic impact, a number of square feet, you guys have all seen that part of the, uh, application, is, um, a section that asks how many, um, bedrooms of different sizes, because that's something I think we don't always cover, or at least it's not always evident, uh, when you're looking at the project. And so, you would have, um, you know, that question of how many units are you doing to bed? Uh, but you'd also have the fair market rent so that the, um, developer, when they're considering this, has that information in front of them, at least whatever the current numbers are from HUD. And again, that's broken out by number of bedrooms, so I think it's a little bit more helpful than having one number for affordability and the developer going, "Well, I can only do one bedroom." Kind of breaks that out a little bit more, um, in detail, and I think that'll be helpful to have in the application. Again, we would wait to include that until Councilman has filed a session.
No, I think, I'm just glad we have something to amend.
Yep.
I think that was the whole goal with the legislation, we had to have something, um, in place, and if it needs amending, then let's do it, uh, to ensure that our residents can afford, um, these beautiful, uh, new spaces, so thank you.
Councilwoman Major?
Thank you, and just along similar lines, so are we, just let us know when you're looking and ready to have some of those conversations. I think, uh, especially Chair Daniels, President Powers and myself will avail ourselves to be able to have those discussions, since those bills will probably have to come to one of our two, uh, committees. Um, but it is good to at least know that we're, we have a few different options in terms of, uh, matrices to look at, matrices, excuse me, to look at in order to, uh, try to figure out how to, um, make the affordable housing ordinance, uh, better suit the residents of the city of Harrisburg. Um, I know, like I said, getting on the books was his first step in figuring out how to make sure it's tailored to the residents so that they can, um, have the best bang for their buck in terms of being able to afford, um, housing in our city, so, thank you for the presentation.
And Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Chair Daniels, um, thank you, Director Knight, for being here this evening. Um, and I know you felt like you didn't have the metrics, but I think those were phenomenal, the eighteen applications, street vacations, just to know that. Um, moving forward, if we can have that in some type of sheet or doc, this way the residents can view it as well, that would be phenomenal, but thank you for that. Um, also to hear the Nineteenth Street Armory is getting looked at, it's encouraging, so I hope it, uh, really plays a role in that South Side area that could benefit the families, that would be amazing. Um, and then I just had a question for the residents watching at home, if, uh, they're not sure if they live in the historic district to know about the regulations, where should they look, um, to find out more information?
Um, so if you, uh, go onto the Planning Bureau's webpage on the City of Harrisburg's website, um, the information there is a lot more easy to find than it has been in the past. Um, and, uh, if, on the main landing page of the Planning Bureau, uh, the zoning map, there's a big button there, and click on that and toggle layers on and off. So, like zoning, parcels, and we have, um, National Historic Districts and Municipal Historic Districts there. Uh, but then we also have a separate historic preservation website, uh, that was created by our former, um, historic preservation specialist, that, that has our guidelines that were adopted by, uh, City Council last year, um, information from P H M C or, um, the National Park Service on, you know, considerations in historic districts, why historic district, why historic preservation is important, uh, things of that nature. So, we actually have a separate webpage that links to our Planning Bureau page, uh, where you can find more information on that.
Awesome, thank you for that, no further questions.
Is there anything else you would like to add?
Um, no, just, uh, you know, happy to be up here presenting, of course, City Council and giving you all, um, an update on what we're doing. Um, going forward, uh, I will be sure to, uh, be sending you some of this documentation, especially on affordable housing, uh, legislation, as we develop it. Probably start with a memo as like, you know, background information.
That would be great, thank you so much.
Next, um, Mr. Parker, would you mind reading Resolution thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two for the record?
Resolution thirty-five dash twenty twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary land development plan submitted by William Wass on behalf of the Catherine Hershey School for Early Learning Harrisburg to construct a new childcare center and make associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Um, would, would the administration go first? Give us an overview of the process for the, the project, um, the, uh, the city's position in the, in the process? And, and first identify yourself too. Thank you.
So this request, um, is actually to build a childcare center, um, around thirty-two thousand square feet. Um, it involves a lot consolidation and a street vacation. Um, the project site is about three point four four acres. So during the, this was heard actually at the Planning Commission in June, uh, and they recommended that this request be approved. Uh, and they, the, the recommendation, uh, excuse me, the recommendation improved, uh, four conditions. Um, I'm just gonna go over those conditions really quickly with you guys. Uh, so the first condition, the applicant will receive approval of street vacations necessary to facilitate the consolidation of the site and implementation of the proposed land development plan. Second condition, any proposed signage on site will conform to the regulations in section seven dash three two five of the zoning code. If not, the applicant will file zoning relief application and receive approval from the zoning hearing board. Condition three, the applicant coordinate with the Department of Public Works to ensure the appropriate placement of and access refuge storage containers and to reflect the count billing, uh, establish the new use on site. And condition four, uh, the curb cut and ingress egress access point along North Sixth Street at, to, um, to be vacated intersection of Delaware Street will not be installed so as to eliminate a vehicular and pedestrian conflict point per the city's Vision Zero program, ensuring smoother traffic flow and allow the establishment of additional on-street parking for use by the proposed project and other nearby uses. Um, so for condition one, um, the applicant actually had submitted a street vacation plan. Um, and that's actually going to be reviewed at a later session to be able to be in conformance where we had to actually advertise it, um, beforehand. So that's going to be introduced later today. Um, and then for condition four, that was kind of discussed, uh, a bit more extensively at the Planning Commission meeting. So originally the Planning Bureau had recommended this condition to the Planning Commission, um, in order to be in compliance with our comp plan, which was hoping to promote Sixth Street as a multimodal corridor and Vision Zero where we didn't, we're trying to eliminate curb cuts wherever we can. Um, and part of that condition from, uh, the Planning Commission, they wanted to hear from our engineering consultant Dowood. So we reached out to them after the meeting. They actually did provide comment. Um, and they didn't, they didn't see any concern, um, with this curb cut being there, um, after they reviewed it from an engineering perspective. So I just wanted to make that clear, um, because that was one of the requests from the Planning Commission. And other than that, um, the Planning Commission was very supportive of this project. I'm sure many of you guys are aware of this. This has been pretty much a lot out in the media. It's providing a very, uh, significant public good to the city. Yes.
Yeah. Um, is the applicant present? Would you be willing to introduce yourself and describe the nature of the project?
Yes, uh, the applicant is here this evening, Catherine Hershey. I'll start with myself first. My name is Kathy Conley. I'm with RGS Associates. I am the Quiet Manager for the project.
Yeah, area. Thank you. A good evening, council members. So I'm Senator Alexander. I'm the Executive Director of the Catherine Hershey Schools for Early Learning. Um, it's great to be here with you guys tonight. We have been just really, I think, just really excited about being able to bring this project to Harrisburg. Um, it is to construct, um, an early childhood education facility. Um, and it's an early childhood education facility. It's kind of like, like none, no, none other. Um, when we think about, you know, from a child's perspective, we are really trying to just ensure that really the whole child is taken care of. Um, so everything from, um, kindergarten readiness, um, to health and wellness, um, ensuring that they have health and wellness checked, dental, um, tech checks, immunizations, um, really everything that the child's gonna really need, um, in the program for, um, for, 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 for our, our kids. Uh, additionally to kind of our whole child kind of approach, um, to, to, to education. Uh, we also really want to do a lot of work with our families as well. Uh, we, we really understand that, you know, that in order, especially when it comes to children from birth to age five, um, being able to, um, you know, really help change those outcomes, just not only starts just with the fam, with, with the child, but it also starts with the family and wrapping around them as well. Um, and so we really want to ensure that, um, for, um, our families, um, that go to our program, um, that they have everything that they need from, you know, things like housing support, um, being able to get into GED classes, financial literacy. Um, you know, being able to, you know, um, have career options, um, being able to go back to school, working with some of the different kind of area, um, community providers that are already out there, um, at, uh, here in Harrisburg. And how can we, you know, once again, really make this kind of a one-stop shop for our families, um, to be able to really take away the barrier of, of child, of, of childcare? Um, and ensure they get a really great, make sure our kids get a really great education. And then secondly, how can we then help those families and be able to ensure that they, they, they receive all of the support that they absolutely need, um, from there? And so, um, this, uh, facility that will be in Harrisburg, it will have children from birth to five years old. Uh, we will have a hundred and fifty children that will be in our programs, um, on a daily basis. Um, we see that this program absolutely will be a hundred percent for Harrisburg, um, um, residents, being that it is right here in Harrisburg and just where the kind of commuting kind of pieces, um, of, uh, in terms of, um, families, uh, will be commuting into the center. Um, and so, you know, we really, you know, really are really just excited about being able to bring, um, this really great, I think, project, uh, to, to Harrisburg and, and the residents here in Harrisburg.
Um, Senator, if you wouldn't mind, do you want to talk a little bit about the community engagement that you and your staff have been working over the last several months? I did give you a handout that does walk you through some of that as, as we speak.
But one of the things that has been really just kind of, you know, critical for us, um, just, you know, as in our mission and, and just in our, you know, uh, what we're trying to kind of achieve and accomplish, um, is really, um, having, um, that, that community support, um, and being able to really get that community buy-in. Um, we understand that, you know, in terms of, you know, coming in as a new organization, while our parent organization is the Milton Hershey School, um, and a lot of folks do know about the Milton Hershey School, this is the first time the Milton Hershey School is actually coming out of, um, you know, Hershey and coming to Harrisburg. Um, and so being able to really build those relationships, you know, we have really put a lot of effort and time into building those relationships and also understanding that this is just a start of all those things. Um, you know, we, we look to be here in perpetuity, um, and, and, and it starts with really coming alongside and partnering with the community. So over the last kind of couple of months, you know, so we've hosted two information sessions. We've participated in a Midtown Development Town Hall, um, meeting where we answer questions just about the project and just heard from residents, um, about the project. Uh, we've met with, uh, a, a whole slew of just kind of local organizations, um, including the Harrisburg School District, um, Capital Area Transit, um, the Camp Curtain Neighborhoods United, um, the Friends of Midtown, um, the Hamilton Health, um, the Joshua, Joshua Group and just more. Um, you know, we really see this as, um, um, once again, you know, when it comes to kind of community engagement, um, we want to be, you know, partnering with as many folks as possible that are especially going to that, of, of, of community resources that have already been here in Harrisburg and have already been doing this work, um, and how can we partner with them? Um, and so, you know, um, the, the, the two biggest ones, you know, so the Camp Curtain Neighborhood United, we've had just a lot of a conversation kind of with them. And the biggest thing that kind of came kind of out, um, in, in, in talking and having that kind of conversation. Last week, they were at the, uh, the, uh, the, the president of the, of the Camp Curtain Neighborhood United was here, um, at the, uh, the City Council meeting. Um, and so, you know, they received, we received feedback on, you know, just our service area, where our service area is and that, that we'll be losing some parking spaces there. And how can we, once again, continuing to just, you know, be very mindful of just parking, just because parking is, uh, in a premium here in the, in the city. Um, I know that they also requested for permit parking, um, to take place, um, on, um, that Minnick Street. We would be absolutely supportive of that. Uh, we also will have our people that'll be out there, you know, um, that will also be directing our, um, you know, uh, uh, staff, our, our, uh, families to ensure that there is no, uh, when it comes to those prop parking as well. Um, we've also been really just kind of discussing, um, also how do we ensure that we have MBE and WB, um, uh, participation as well? And so we've been working with this an area contractor, um, just helping us with that A to Z diversity solutions. I'm in Tremaine, I'm Trey, Terry, um, as well. And so, once again, you know, it's been really a comprehensive plan of how can we really partner with the, uh, with, with the community and be, and be a part of this and have them a part of this as we keep going.
If I could, I just want to dive into a little bit of the engineering and just some of the data on the property. Jacob did a great job in orienting. I'm sure you're all very familiar with where this is located. With the redevelopment, we're looking at two parcels that are being created. Uh, one, the main parcel, that's about three point four four acres, uh, to the north of Minnick, situated between Sixth and Seventh. And then the second lot, which is just over half acre at point five four acres on the south side of Minnick. So that would be at the corner of Minnick and Sixth. The primary use, proposed use is a childcare center. Um, we're looking at that for both parcels as the use. And we are in two of your zones, your commercial general and your commercial neighborhood. One of the items we want to point out is, um, I know a lot of times when you hear the commercial neighborhood, you think of no parking required. It was very important to us, not only hearing from the community, but knowing how, um, early ed centers and even, you know, schools function. You need to have adequate parking or the street becomes the parking. Um, so I will want to be very clear, uh, that with our use for the hundred and fifty children, our employees, we are providing parking on site, uh, on lot number one, that three point four acre parcel. Uh, we have twenty-five that are allocated, uh, to the parents for, uh, and when we say drop off, we mean park, get your children out, get all of their belongings, taking them into the facility. This is not, um, there will be no, um, pull-up, drop-off kind of situations that you, you might see in elementary school. Um, and so then all employees, employees, the more, uh, kind of cart oriented, of course, will be off of, um, Seventh Street and Puffer. And that front, um, lot that we're front-facing onto Sixth off Minnick will be more of our parent. We're also close to, uh, a bus route. We're improving all the sidewalks and the curbing along all of our street frontages. Currently, they're next to nil, um, due to the redevelopment that's been occurring on, you know, demolition and redevelopment on this property over the last twenty, twenty-five years. Um, so we'll be improving all of those. We have, um, as Senator has stated, Capital Area Transit, uh, we're looking to put a new bus shelter at the corner of Minnick and Sixth. That is a designated stop. Um, there is no shelter there. So, um, we've, we've been working on design for a shelter that will be very beneficial to not only the community, but to the parents, um, that would be getting off public transit and getting to the facility, um, both coming and going. Uh, this property will be serviced by all public utilities. Everything that we're proposing to service the facility will be underground. Uh, we, as I stated, we have a number of improvements along the street frontages, including the planting of, uh, street trees that we will be proposing. You can see some of the exhibits, um, that we both had in our package and, um, that are in front of you this evening. And I would point out also that as part of the space and as part of the use, uh, we have, um, taken care of stormwater. That's always a big, uh, a big concern. So, um, our project has been reviewed by a Capital Regional Water and it's also been reviewed by the County Conservation District. Uh, we already have approval from the County Conservation District and we have, uh, a verbal email approval from Capital Regional Water. Uh, we are doing collection and infiltration on the site. We have two proposed underground systems. One in the, um, the parent parking lot and one in the employee. All water is being collected. Um, this area would have been a combined sewer water long ago. Most of those combination inlets and structures were filled years ago. And so most of the water actually just sheet flowed from one street to the next until it got to the intersection of Minnick and Seventh and was collected in, um, a storm drain, uh, that is on a storm only, but my understanding is several blocks down the road, it does do a combination. Again, as it gets closer to town. Uh, but one of the things this project does is it does take the two-year, um, storm event and does infiltrate it into the ground. There's great infiltration here, um, great substance to do that. Uh, so, so that work has been laid out. Uh, I want to highlight and, and just kind of recap back to the conditions that Jacob had stated. Condition one, uh, we see no issue, of course. Uh, that street vacation was at last week's, put into, uh, the first reading as Bill eight, twenty twenty-two. So we understand that that will be before the hearing here at the end of July. The second item, any proposed signage on the site shall conform to, uh, chapter seven, three twenty-five of your zoning. Again, we have no issue with that. And, um, if there's any freestanding, any signage, of course, it will conform to that and will apply for the correct permits. Condition number three, as it relates to coordination with the public works to ensure placement of and access to refuge and storage containers, that has been all underway with, um, CHS, uh, and your representatives, um, for the Public Works Department. And, and again, we can comply with that. And number four, um, again, as Jacob had stated, uh, we have, as, as an applicant, we are requesting access both ingress and egress from a, what would have been the previous Delaware Street. So if you're looking at, um, Minnick, Delaware and Puffer, we're not looking to add a new curb cut, um, to service our facility. We're looking to take Delaware away from a street and actually use that for not only our entrance, but we've worked with our neighbor across the street, which is Homeland. So Homeland owns the vacant property that sits at the corner of Puffer and Sixth. And so to help them plan for the future and to help us plan, to not add too many curb cuts and to try, you know, to follow the Vision Zero Plan, um, which helps to, uh, really affect traffic, you know, eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injury, you know, in our mind, not adding, but utilizing an existing curb cut, an established location that had been there, um, you know, is the preferred. We, um, as Jacob has stated, that your engineer, your city engineer has, uh, reviewed that and sees no engineering issue. So we would ask that condition four, as placed by the Planning Commission, um, and their placement was to keep this until your city engineer review, we would ask that this condition four be eliminated. Any questions you have for us?
Um, so can you tell us in terms of the actual program of the, of the facility, how many, how many children, uh, what's your maximum?
So it's a hundred and fifty children, um, from birth to five years old.
And, um, what are, you know, what are the costs associated? How do families participate?
Yeah. Um, I forgot. This is, this is the part that I like the most. Uh, it's all cost-free to families. Um, and so, uh, there will be an application process. Um, and so just like the Milton Hershey School, one of the biggest things, you know, that's within our deed of trust is that it has to go to children that are, um, at risk or disadvantaged. Um, so there is an income threshold, um, in order to be able to go through it. And there is an application process, um, that, that they would have to go through, um, to get that. Because we, you know, we do believe that there's going to probably be more than a hundred and fifty folks that are going to apply. So we will have thinking about prioritization and thinking about how we will prioritize those folks that do get it.
And, um, if the, if the plan is approved, uh, when do you see yourself opening up?
Yes, so we, we, um, are looking for a, either a, a spring twenty twenty-four, um, opening date.
Um, and then I just need some clarification regarding the street. So are we looking to consider Resolution thirty-five hyphen twenty-two before the street vacation ordinance?
Yes, we, and that's happened before. The condition doesn't go away. They have to secure it. Um, but for timing of, of planning, uh, there was a twenty-eight day window, uh, that has to be under the statute before you can have the hearing. So it was to consider this now so they can get underway with many, many preliminary pieces of it. And then have the street vacation heard on the twenty-sixth of July at a work session followed by a legislative session for a vote. It requires special advertising.
It requires special advertising for three weeks as well. So I, you can ask the applicant, but I don't think that process interferes with what they're doing. And the street vacation has been recommended along the way by Planning Bureau and by the Planning Commission.
Um, but then we could theoretically be in a situation where it gets approved, the condition is there, but the, something happens, the street vacation is granted.
I, I can confidently say that if the street vacation is not granted, this project is not, the design doesn't work. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
Right. So I mean, I think, I think everyone just has to go into it with open eyes about what the, the interrelation of the two is. They present, they've represented at two different planning hearings. And there'll be actually a separate variance hearing on a, on a different piece of application later because this is a large, complicated project. So we don't, we don't anticipate it to be an issue.
I guess I just feel a little bit more comfortable getting the vacation before. When is the deemed approved date for this?
The deemed approved date's August 30th, but I would note, I mean, like the solicitor saying, if they can't vacate these streets, they will not be able to develop this project because as, as it's submitted, just because they're using the streets for part of the building or it's going to be existing. So for whatever reason, if that straight vacation didn't get approved, there was some issue, even if this was approved today, they would not be able to develop it because it would not meet a condition. Which that's typical even like the typical in the zoning hearing board process, things are approved, conditions aren't fulfilled yet. So, you know, for example, like updating refuse, that's typically not done until well after something goes through the zoning process. And I think that's kind of a similar situation here as well, that a lot of conditions can't be met until further in the process, even after getting approval. If that makes sense.
And but the, I mean, I guess we just very recently updated our street vacation ordinance because we wanted, you know, some public policy reasons for making those updates. So if we're not taking them, those, you know, I, I know that.
Well, this is probably the first project you had that offers free childcare to the children of Harrisburg. They satisfied the checkbox that we put in the ordinance for street vacation for a public good, which is one of the things we added.
But we're not the, I, I don't like to presume that an entity is going to make a particular decision prior to them hearing. You know, the.
I, I understand what you're saying. Clearly this will all come back to you. For any reason, the council said in July, this street vacation's an issue, it would all come back to you. I mean, that is simply what would have to happen because it's so integrally related because this is 23 parcels of being consolidated. There's consolidation pieces that have to be filed to do this in the courthouse. It's all a very detailed, long process for them to hit their spring 2024 mark. I believe I understand the process, but they can speak to, to where the, where the pressure points are and where the delays happen if, if these things don't happen.
All right. Yeah. So I mean, we're, we're, we're accepting the condition one as it is and, and understanding that, that if it for some reason on the, at the end of July did not get approved, the, the street vacation, we would be having to come back and redesign, obviously our plan from there. So yes, there are, I think some, but yeah, so we are, we, we acknowledge and we understand.
I guess for process purposes, like what are your challenges? That were, that you would be facing like at each step of this. Especially in relation to the street vacation.
Yeah. So, so one of the things that you're highlighting on that I would just touch on is that from a development side, they're being very, we're having to be aggressive in the timing that they're driven with their mission to open a, a facility here in the city of Harrisburg. You know, in working through the design, many of you may know that a facility is being built in Hershey. It's under construction. You know, it wasn't picking up a prototype. If you're, some of you are familiar with some other early learning centers, they're very much a prototype. That was very different. So there was a lot of time and effort. We've been meeting with city staff and just the, the timing, our window is just closing up. And unfortunately, if there's a much later, then that could have impact on openings of, you know, of another facility. The Hershey, you know, there's a timing factor that has to occur. And so it, it does have a huge impact. One of our other items is we're going into winter. So the timing for recording documents and then taking ownership of the, the land fully and then doing a formal bid, getting, you know, materials. Supply chain right now is our huge issue and escalation. And so what's going to happen is if we don't hit our window here before fall, we're going to be early winter and working in the soils. The soils that we're talking about on this property were, you know, originally homes and demo occurred over a 20 year period. And they're, I'll just say, they're all clean. There's no environmental, something like that from us, but from a workability, they're not soils that we want to work with in the winter. So if we would have a very wet late fall into winter, we would have delays potentially. So we've got to hit our window here or we may as well not start until after winter. That, that's kind of the, the construction, I think is the question you were asking, what impact? This could have well more than a six month impact because of the time of year that we're starting.
Add to that. I mean, I think the other thing is just thinking about disemissions for when families are looking for childcare and looking for. And so we're trying to be very mindful of when families are actually looking and then also understanding just the, also impacts that a, if there was any type of delays that took, that, how, what would they have on emissions? And, 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 you know, really, you know, families, you know, you really got two big windows. You got a spring or you really got fall. You, families don't come in, you know, they've already made their decisions usually during the summertime or they made it during, you know, kind of that January, right before the summer or right at the end of the summer. And so we just want to make sure that we could hit our deadline kind of with that and then ensure that we're going to be able to reach all 150 children at that time. And, you know, parents aren't trying to change, you know, during the, the middle of a school year with that as well. So that's, that's another really big driving factor for us.
And that's it for me. I'll open up for my fellow councilman. I love this time, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. I'd like to start off by saying, Senate and the team, thank you for being here this evening. I just wanted to thank you guys for a lot of the due diligence that you've done thus far. Sometimes it's challenging to ask for some developers to do one of the many things that you guys have already executed as far as considering the comp plan. Vision Zero was really, really big. Chair Matten at the time worked hard with the rest of council to make sure that was executed. So thank you for that. As well as checking in with our contracted engineer at DEW. A lot of times we just have to ask for that consideration, but it seems like you guys are one step ahead and it's really appreciated. And then also tying up the loose ends with the letters of recommendation and the support. I actually have been able to be at a few of the engagement ceremonies you guys had and I just appreciate it. But then also, did you guys, did you say send it on your own, like parking attendant or someone there for Catherine's school?
So what we have is, is that in each of the centers, we do have a security officer that is going to be there at the center. And so we see that person, not only do we have a, a, a kind of a security kind of person that's there, but we also have family engagement specialists as well that'll be working with families. And so we envision that they will be definitely out, you know, during, you know, pick up and drop off, really helping kind of direct traffic, helping move things, helping greeting families, right? And just, you know, really being just kind of a part of that whole process to ensure that, you know, once again, the safety is there and that families are getting in and out of the center well.
And that will be, I know you've covered it, but that's 100% free for any qualifying family?
Yes.
And the age is, I think, six weeks to.
Six weeks is the youngest, to five years old.
Graders. As a dad of five, I know how much I struggled just trying to get childcare to, you know, especially with my youngest. And I literally had to sit it down for like six to eight months because, you know, it just wasn't active in the area. So it's definitely something I would love to advocate for and, and assist. So the specific acts tonight to help you guys move forward would be what specifically?
Well, so just approval of the, of the land development plan with condition number four.
Removed, correct.
Exactly.
And Parliament, would that be something council can take action on?
It, it can. It was actually a very deeply discussed issue with the planning commission. They had requested at the time it be removed. And our recommendation from the lobby at the time was since the engineers are going to talk to each other, but we, we don't have a report back yet to let that occur. That did occur and I think our engineers are in agreement that condition four is unnecessary.
Okay. And I think just making all the steps that they made, I mean, even with the MBE, WBE inclusion with our local unions and workers, a lot of times that is just like pulling teeth. And you guys seem to be hitting all the marks. So I wouldn't, and this is a work session, so I wouldn't mind putting forth a motion to have number four removed at this time. No, all questions over. Thank you.
Thank you, and then thank you all for being here. That presentation is thorough. See a lot of letters of support from various different organizations that have expressed their interest in seeing this project move forward. One question I did have, I mean, we have a lot of community organizations that have spoken up, but in terms of some of your immediate neighbors, what, what has the feedback been from some of them and how this project would impact that community?
So one of the biggest things that we heard was really about parking, right? You know, parking in the city is at a, at a premium. And so we've been just really super intentional just around just kind of our parking to just ensure that, really that there were no, none of our, the, the on-street parking that is especially there in Minnick Street, that there would be none of our, you know, all, all of the parking that we need for our facility, once again, will need, will be provided onsite. It's another reason why, you know, we will be kind of coming back later for the South Lot, so that ancillary parking lot. So there's a South Lot on the, the corner of, I guess, Minnick and Sixth. Sixth and Minute, exactly. That we'll be coming back for. Once again, we, 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 we need that parking. Really just, you know, in thinking about just all the partners that we are going to have there if we ever have an event, if we ever have anything, you know, that, that is, you know, more than just a, we want to make sure that we have that overflow parking to be able to do. And it's really a necessity for us, once again, to not, you know, put any, at any time, have any on, have our, our, use any of the on-street parking for the residents. I think the other thing that I, that we heard kind of about is just, once again, just being in constant communication with them around just construction. When construction happens. And so we want to be really intentional, just about having those kind of more community events and just continuing, you know, as we get closer to construction, starting construction, just to make sure that we're hearing all the different things that are kind of going on, even during construction. We've also want to make sure there's no parking issues on there. So we've been thinking through it once again, even those construction vehicles, where do we put the different, you know, materials and everything like that? And being very, you know, intentional around that as well. And so, you know, that, those were the big, biggest things that I think that we really heard from the, from the community.
Okay. And then I know you're mentioning the community events, but in terms of any direct outreach to those residents along Minnick Street, have, have you done any since? That's, that's where I see the largest impact because there are, you know, more, more residents that still would have properties based upon, you know, looking at those two renderings that you have. One that has the additional parking and one that would just still have a vacant lot.
So yeah, so I, so at one of the community events, we did have a, 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 a direct resident that is right there on Minnick Street that came to the event. I actually took a walk down with her down to, to, to the area where, where we're at to just kind of talk through a couple of things. One of the things that she said was, well, it was about just kind of the service area and just ensuring that there was no, you know, when, you know, when the vans or trucks are coming out, how do we just ensure that there's a wide enough space so that they are not hitting any cars or anything like that? And so, you know, we, we went back and really kind of looked at, you know, our, you know, plans to just see, you know, you know, you'll, you'll be able to do it. One, we don't think that there's going to be very many trucks that'll be kind of going in because it'll be mainly just kind of lunch, you know, supply drop off. But then two, you know, you, they'll be able to do a three-point turn. They won't need to back out of there. They will be able to turn all the way back around and be able to go out safely from there. So we were able to kind of, kind of alleviate that kind of concern as well. The other question was, you know, would there be any ability to utilize any of the, you know, the, some of that ancillary parking up there? I think that's another thing that we, where we said we're open to, to just to talk through. I don't know at this particular point, we'd have to think through what are all the different, you know, kind of pros, cons and how can we, we utilize that space? We do have community space that's right out in front of there. So we do see that that is going to be an area where communities, you know, whether we have food trucks there, farmers. We do see that there's going to definitely be a community use to that and that some community will use that for parking. But once again, how and, and what all the logistics are around there, we still need to think through those things.
Okay. Yeah, that was going to, that was going to be my, my next question about if we were to move forward with that ancillary parking, if residents would be able to have any use. And then I guess the next question would be for the solicitor. If we were to do something like that, would that have any impact on any of the parking agreements that we would have in place? We have in place in the city with standard parking.
I would have to look very, very carefully at the, at the maps. This is really driven by their maps.
All right. Yeah. And I know, like I said, at the last meeting, a resident, at last city council meeting, a resident mentioned maybe looking at its own parking for that area to give residents a little bit more concern. But I think that's something we'd have to have a larger conversation about.
Yeah, the permit parking is a process by residents to have to come in with an application. And sometimes there's a traffic study, if not every time. So there is a process for that. The, but I think that's sort of down the road.
Okay. All right. No problem. Thank you. I know for the questions, Chair Daniels.
I'm going to just add a point about that lot at Sixth and Minnick Street. That will actually not be coming before you guys. It will be going before the zoning hearing board for zoning relief since it's an accessory lot on a different property that's not accessory to anything. So that will actually require a variance and we'll definitely be trying to encourage the applicant to perhaps find a more productive use for the property. Perhaps affordable housing, something other than surface parking, but definitely understand the concern of the community. So we'll definitely be kind of working out those details in the planning process with those boards.
Right. And then just to be clear, so the, the only properties that were, that, that piece is included in this package, but the use for it has not been determined yet. Correct?
Yeah. So the materials that you guys have actually shows that on the land development plan, that lot across the street on Minnick Street. So they actually revised the application. So that revised application has not been forwarded to you guys. And I believe it was about two weeks ago, we received like the forward vision. So that lot was actually, that parking lot was removed. So just to be clear, this is the lot across from Minnick in the intersection of Sixth and Minnick.
On the south, on the south side.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
President Bowers.
Thank you. I have a few questions. First, I'd like to follow up Mr. Alexander on the resident that had the issue that lives on Minnick Street. Did she feel that you addressed her concerns? Was she satisfied with the information you shared?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were here. Hello. Well, I'm not sure if you'll offer public comment later during the meeting, perhaps about. Okay. So that'll come later, but thank you for joining us. Glad you're here. I'm sorry. No, it will not. No. Thank you. So I wanted to address that. And I see that you've reached out to a number of area churches in the vicinity. I'm not clear if you ever received any response from any of them.
So I did receive response from one of them. And so we're actually meeting with, I think it's AME. And Pastor, I want to say Bragman on, I think it's next Tuesday to, to continue, just have more discussions as well.
Okay. And it's Bethel AME Church, just for your reference. And you said his name correctly. My last question is, I see a letter of support from the school district. So given that your parent organization is Milton Hershey School, how will you intend to work with the school district or what type of relationship can residents expect there?
Yeah. So, you know, we, we, we believe that we're going to have a very, just kind of robust kind of relationship with them and really helping children, really with that kind of kindergarten transition support and families with that as well. I think part of this, we do see that part, some pieces is that some families will go to the Milton Hershey School and they may want to, you know, it's, it's a separate application process to go to the Milton Hershey School. So it's not an automatic kind of granting to the Milton Hershey School. But, and so we do see that there, yes, there might be some families that do want to take that option. But I think that what we see that, you know, given that it's much different, once again, Milton Hershey Schools are residential versus this kind of day program. I think we do see that most of the families. Um, but I think that what we see that, you know, given that it's much different, once again, Milton Hershey Schools are residential um versus this kind of day program, I think we do see that most of the families. Uh, will most likely go into the Harrisburg School District, um, and so we really want to work alongside the Harrisburg School District. Um, you know, to really help them, um, I know that they have some plans just on, on, um, just when we talked to the superintendent, they have some plans about pre-K. Um, and how can we, once again, work alongside one another and really help with that kindergarten transition support? Um, and, um, and, um, you know, what, once again, helping, you know, really having a warm handoff um from CHS into um to the public schools. Uh, we also see it as just another way to be able to lift the the Harrisburg School uh School District. Um, if we can, you know, send, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, you know, kindergarten-ready children. Uh, into the school district, you know, what kind of effect is that going to have over the next kind of couple of years? Um, um, and so, um, you know, we see us really working kind of hand in hand with them um to uh to to help with this uh with the project.
Thank you, and my final question is uh for the administration, or I'm not sure if Mr. Bowen can answer this. Um, it's in reference to that zoning hearing board uh condition number four that was mentioned earlier. Um, Mr. Grover said that the engineers were in agreement, is there anything in writing solidifying this position?
Um, I do have uh an email from Dowood, um, I don't know if I could send that to the council um for your attention, what I received. From our consultant regarding that condition, um, basically how they, their opinion was that that curb cut can remain in place.
I think that would be helpful, considering that we're removing it, just to have something in writing, thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thanks, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, I I don't really have any questions, I was able to discuss this with you all at the planning commission meeting, as well as a meeting with you outside of. Um, formal meetings, and so I I look forward to this project, I think it'll be great for our community, um. I love the passion that you all have, um, and the true genuine excitement you have about serving the community, so I just look forward to it, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilwoman Madison.
Uh, yeah, just for clarification on my end. Hundred and fifty students, correct?
That's correct.
And they will all be Harrisburg residents?
So, we're still going through, I think, the admissions process and just what the prioritization, but yes, absolutely, that is the what we are looking to do is serve Harrisburg District's uh uh students. Um, usually where families kind of come is usually, you know, within a three to five mile radius, it's usually within very close set proximity to the center, so we don't have anything of like busing from outside in or anything like that. This is for Harrisburg residents.
Clarification on my end, um, no, I just appreciate all the outreach and uh community engagement. And um, yeah, look forward to this project, childcare is a definite need. Just in terms of our economy, one of the biggest barriers for a lot of folks entering the workforce is affordable childcare. And uh, the investment you see in childcare um has tremendous benefits with that youth and future generations. Very in support of this measurement, Harrisburg in a number of ways, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels, and good evening, and thank you for coming and presenting this, I've been looking at the pictures as you all speak. Um, I just had about two questions, one was, I know you said about a hundred and fifty students. Are you, is there a goal in the future to expand it to more students, is there a cap and what that goal would be? Um, just wondering for future plans within the building.
Sure, so uh, there will always be a hundred and fifty students um um in the uh in the center, um, really, that's just from just best practices. Um, just to ensure that we are really, you know, getting the, the children are getting the individualized attention that they need. Um, a lot of studies just show the higher you go, um, the the less um of the quality of care, um, and we want to make sure that we're giving them the best quality of care, so we'll always be a hundred and fifty. Um, I would also say, though, however, that we are also, just as the Milton Hershey School has before, and just in creating this, is that we're always looking for more opportunities to. To uh to serve more children, so, um, while it may not be at this particular location, there might be other opportunities in the uh in the in the future to be able to have, you know, additional locations, different things like that, as we think through. How do we continue to uh to serve um to serve the the residents, especially as as we continue to see just how much the need is?
Okay, thank you, you actually answered both of the questions that I had, I had another one, but you did. I'm fine, and, you know, thank you for bringing this program um to the city, it's definitely a much-needed, um, not just affordable daycare, but free daycare, and I did go to one of. Um, you had something at the civic center to welcome you to the neighborhood, and you all just saying that uh you weren't just focusing on the student, but also the families. And uh trying to help them out as well, because uh the children, they do go home. And in their environment, and they need just as much um help at home with their family as they do in school. Um, I do hope we can definitely figure something out with parking. Um, that is a, as you said, a premium um in our community, and it's needed, and I. Want to make sure that as we go about this, we are considering the residents and what they need and figure something out, so not only can this program. Um, come to this city and help our students, but so that our residents also support it and get what they need. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels.
Are there any other questions? I thank you so much for uh joining us.
Thank you.
I'd like to. Recommend that we add this to the legislative agenda for this evening. Um, next, uh, could you read into the record, Resolution thirty-six hyphen uh twenty twenty-two, please?
Resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary slash final land development plan. For fourteen hundred and fourteen oh six Sycamore Street. Submitted by George Fernandez Realty Group LLC. To construct a four-story, twenty-three-unit building that will provide affordable housing and make associated site and access improvements.
Someone could speak, uh, could someone from the administration give us a little uh process history uh for this application, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Absolutely, um, so this project, um, as mentioned, is for twenty-three um affordable dwelling units, and when I say affordable, this is actually going to be. Affordable using our Affordable Housing Ordinance, these will actually be restricted to affordable, so not just saying affordable. Um, so this is actually the first time that this has actually come before this council, where they're utilizing the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Um, so this project actually came before the zoning hearing board, um, and received various zoning approval back in February. Uh, so some of that zoning relief they got was actually for the multifamily use um in the residential medium-density zoning district. Um, they also received a variance from the density regulations. Uh, so they were by right as affordable units, they were permitted seventeen units, um, so they received, uh, you know, since it's twenty-three, they had to get. A variance for exceeding that, um, and they also received a variance for um going over the maximum purview surface area on these two lots. Um, and actually, after reviewing this plan, um, it looks like they're actually going to be in conformance with that. Um, originally, they, the applicant looked like from the preliminary plan, they didn't have the final land development plan at the time, looked like they may potentially be exceeding that. Um, but it looks like from what was submitted, they will be actually being conformance with that. So this request was actually um from the planning commission um for the land development part back in May. Um, it was recommended this be approved with conditions, um, and these three conditions were. That the applicant is required to receive a certificate of qualification for student to chapter twelve dash one oh one of title twelve. Um, that's the Affordable Housing Certification, um, this be prior to the law consolidation land development plan uh being recorded with the Dauphin, um, Dauphin County. Second condition, uh, the applicant will reconstruct or install new ADA compliant sidewalks along the frontages of all properties. Associated with development, additionally, the applicant will ensure that the proposed curb cut to the rear parking area. Will use a driveway design that eliminates the height of the surround, sorry, that elevates to the height of the surrounding sidewalks. Uh, condition three, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works. To conform with the appropriate size and location of refuse collection onsite and update the billing accounts to reflect the new use. Um, so condition one, that's going to be actually uh working through the process of the Affordable Housing Ordinance. I'm gonna, as you guys discussed earlier uh with Mr. Knight, um, there is going to have to be uh some reforms to that. Uh, so basically, for condition one, we're going to have to make sure that they conform to whatever the change is going to be with that, um, we. Probably wind up discussing that a little bit more as well, um, but wanted to make that clear that they will have to. Be looking at that, and as discussed earlier, that's likely going to be the fair market rates, most likely, but obviously, we're going to have to make that change here. Um, that's pretty much it.
I know, I guess you all are the applicants, if you don't mind introducing yourselves, giving us a little bit of a summary of the project.
Thank you so much, buenas noches, uh, good evening, my name's George Fernandez, I'm the founder and CEO of Fernandez Realty Group. Um, I've lived in Harrisburg for the past twenty-three, twenty-four years, I'm a product of a single mother of three, victim of domestic violence, we lived in a shelter here in the city for quite some time. Uh, myself, I lived in low-income housing. I remember my mother and my two siblings and I lived in a low-income apartment with a stove that had four burners, but only one burner worked. At the time, the kitchen, but the the rice was done, the chicken was cold. Um, and with that being uh the passion that drives me, uh, we went out on a really big limb and purchased this land to build. A four-story twenty-three unit um right across the street from Foose Elementary School. Um, my full-time career uh by day is I run a social determinants of health outreach agency called Latino Connection. Uh, we've been in Harrisburg now for approximately seven to eight years. And uh, really what drives us is helping to change uh the face of what low-income housing uh looks like. Um, so in front of you, uh, you have renderings of this project. Uh, bringing what I like to tell Jacob and Jonathan, uh, bringing a little bit of fresh and sexy. Uh, to downtown Harrisburg as it relates to low-income housing. Uh, using very high-quality uh and colored stainless steels with a lot of natural lighting and a lot of um. Uh, green spaces, uh, both uh inside and outside of the facilities in the building. And um, we're really excited to be here in front of you tonight, and uh we need your approval in order for us to move forward and not delay this project. Um, as we start to go into winter season. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and with me tonight is Jonathan Bowser from Stillworks Construction.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bowser?
Um, not really, I think, uh, Mr. Fernandez answered, um, did a really good job, only thing I would add is, um. With the density requirement going up to twenty-three units, um, we are taking advantage within the ordinance is the parking, so you'll see, uh, in what you have in your packet. That we are proposing thirteen, I think thirteen parking spaces, also, along with that, we'll have. Some um bike racks as well for for any residents that um may not have a vehicle, uh, but, you know, have access to uh bicycles, so. Um, I think outside of that, I think, you know, we're we're okay with all the conditions uh that Mr. Bowen laid out, so we don't have any any objections there. Thank you.
And um, will. The tenants of these facilities have like an application process, what what do things? Give us an idea of what um, when you expect the project to be done, and when you expect and. It to be occupied and the process for getting the facility occupied.
Wonderful, yeah, well, with your approval tonight, uh, we hope to uh start construction um early fall of this year. Um, and we estimate construction roughly about ten to twelve months, uh, so hopefully the project uh will be ready to open its doors um late fall of next year. Um, with the twenty-three units, uh, we've already uh gone out to um some of our region's top organizations that have been doing this type of work and have received over ten support letters. Uh, from the local community action commission to the YWCA, Harrisburg Area Community College, Coalition on Homelessness. Uh, Patty Kim's office, Joanna McClinton State Leader, uh, the Pennsylvania Chamber of Industry. Uh, just to kind of name a few, as well as support letters from the commissioner's office. Uh, so really understanding that um there is already a lot of uh housing need in our city. Understanding that affordable housing, there is already a huge waiting list. Of people that need to be placed, whether they're on section eight vouchers, or whether they're um a part of uh the homelessness voucher programs with the local organizations. We already have um a a list of organizations that are ready, willing, and able uh to make referrals to us. Um, as this project gets off the ground, um, we were covered by Penn Live uh sometime earlier this year, and we were just flooded with emails from nonprofit organizations and local churches as well. Uh, to make referrals, and yes, there will be an application process, and uh we are also going to adhere to uh the federal HUD guidelines. And I believe HRA uh provided us uh the rent-based income that we are also going to adhere and follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's just for me, I'll start, uh, I'll open up to my fellow council members, I'll start with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Daniels, thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. Um, will the rental properties be Harrisburg resident-specific or kind of open to um whomever for the application process?
Well, it'll be open, we understand that I would say roughly about ninety to ninety-five percent of the applicants will be city residents. Um, we've already established a lot of partnerships and organizations from the organizations that I recently mentioned. Um, and we know that twenty-three units will not even be enough. Um, so we're very confident that this is a project uh for the city of Harrisburg and for the people of the city of Harrisburg.
Absolutely, um, Mr. Bowser, what um complications, if any, do you see as far as supplies, materials with the way things are going?
Um, well, there's always issues and complications with supply chain.
Absolutely.
Heard from the previous, you know, from the previous presentation, so we have the same concerns and worries as well. Uh, Mr. Fernandez is out successfully, you know, raising money for this project, um, we were successful with getting some PFHA money. Affordable housing, and um, and so all those dollars are 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 met with budget. Uh, that we provide, and so, you know, as long as we can try to hit this early fall uh start date, we think we're okay, we can start lining up contracts in a couple of months, and we could really lock in. So, it's it's always a concern, interest rates are also a concern, um, but I think that we have the right momentum, uh, and the project has been well-received, we're in pretty good shape.
Awesome, great spirit, um, no further questions, Chair Daniels, thank you.
Councilman Majors.
Thank you, and and thank you uh for being here. Uh, one of the things that you did mention in terms of what you're looking at for the rent for the units is the HUD guideline, so. Um, I know the conversation here uh in in our city has been, you know, with the HUD lines, HUD guidelines, you know, set out for the MSA for our our region. Those numbers are still exceed what the average city resident um could afford in terms of rent, so. Um, just want to be very um intentional and specific, so what is the number, what is the rent um that you would be looking to uh? Have residents, have uh those renters uh pay each month for uh this property?
That's a great question, Councilman, thank you so much, I'm understanding that those guidelines also uh change every year, um, we're happy to adhere to those guidelines, um, HRA gave us a base of seven sixty-nine. Uh, so that is the current uh number that we are currently at, understanding that within the next twelve to eighteen months, that seven sixty-nine number could change a little bit. Um, and understanding that um construction costs are only going up um every thirty days. When we started discussions on this project, we were at a budget of two point nine, we're now at a budget of three point four. Uh, so the longer that we take to start construction, uh, the more cost it is, and the harder it becomes to secure financing. Um, we've been successful at securing a major grant uh recently uh from PHFA using fair funding, so really excited for that opportunity. And um, you know, we're we're just really looking forward to getting this project started sooner rather than later. Um, so that we can um try to secure and keep costs low. As you heard from previous applicants, understanding that, you know, the winter season is upon us, uh, the sooner that we can break ground, um, the better for the overall project.
Okay, thank you, and then uh in terms, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to add to that, I think also, you're also applying for some voucher programs too, so. You know, with the voucher programs, you can get, it, there's a floor on there of about, I think, five sixty-nine. So the net, the net payment from the actual resident would be two hundred dollars a month, so. You know, we're still in the process, but that's the, that's the goal, I I think, to to kind of touch on probably what you, what your, you know, what your question was really at is, how do you even make it even more affordable? Uh, and we think the voucher program is going to be a good vehicle for us to do so.
Okay, thank you, and then, um, in terms of size of the units for the residents, so you're looking at twenty-three units, or, you know, you just give us, again, that breakdown of, you know, one bedroom, two bedroom. Uh, what that, what that'll look like, because I know, you know. Well, we've seen a lot of one bedrooms come in at very high um rents that have come before, so just want to look at what your, you know, which your, your goal is for this property.
Yeah, so for us, our units are meant to be either single occupancy um or transitional housing units. Um, so we have two types, uh, type A is four hundred eighty-nine square feet. So we have two types. Type A is 489 square feet. And type B, excuse me, type A is 469, 469 square feet. And type B is 489, so right under 500 square feet for both unit types. So it has your kitchen, your bathroom, your in, your in-unit washer and dryer, as well as your heating and vent and, you know, that type of closet space as well, along with closet space. So it kind of looks more of a studio type of approach. But again, bringing in really high-end quality items into the kitchen and into the bathroom and making sure that the people that are going to be living at Sycamore Homes have pride and dignity in the type of unit that they're living in and ultimately changing the face of what low-income housing looks like here in the city of Harrisburg.
Okay. And then in terms of it being single occupancy, so what is the, are you looking at like a target age group? So with those vouchers, are you looking at senior housing vouchers or are you looking at just a normal voucher program?
So while two people can live inside a unit, it, we are targeting single occupancy for the most part. We are looking at both senior housing vouchers, but as well as Section 8 vouchers as well. For us, it's still too early in the process to tell. I think there's a lot of different ordinances that need to be approved here in the city. As you heard from Director Jeffrey Knight earlier, our project is the first project as a part of that new ordinance. So a lot will come in front of you over the next few weeks that will potentially, you know, be positive for our project. So once those things are squared away and signed and sealed, that'll help us to understand what our next steps are in the project as well.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just lastly a comment. We all recognize the need for, you know, affordable housing in our community. I just, you know, just noting the proximity to a school, you know, the single occupancy. You know, if it would have been something to me, you know, understanding you got to get the best use out of the funds available. But maybe having, if units were available to families or small families right across the street, I think that would be also positive. And, you know, granted, we do have other housing units in that vicinity, but just wanted to note that comment. But look forward to hearing more from you and the other questions from my colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman. And, you know, we looked at that and understanding that it's a small lot across the street. It's only 0.30 acres. In order for us to make the project eligible for financing, there was no way to be able to make these units any bigger while still filling a small portion of the gap of low-income housing that's needed in the city of Harrisburg.
Okay.
But thank you.
Yep, thanks for, thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
I'm just really excited about this project, to say the least. Thank you for your interest in the Affordable Housing Legislative Package. This is really what it's all about, changing the face, changing the stigma associated with potentially low-income housing. So my question for Mr. Bowen is, I think the first condition that you shared was related to the amendments that need to be made to the package. And I wanted to make sure that that will not impact their timeline for development.
So we are going to have to have these revisions. So that could potentially impact this. I know that there's no language in this condition saying they have to conform to revised Affordable Housing Ordinance. That's something we're, our department, other departments, and coordination with council as well. We're going to have to work this out.
So it could potentially impact, is that what I'm hearing?
Potentially.
If it's not done soon.
If it's not done, absolutely, potentially.
If it stalls for any reason, they would have the right to get a certificate of certification of eligibility under the current percentages. So the target is to bring it to you the first meeting you are back in August.
Okay.
And have it voted on in September. But the, the numbers and the exact citations have to be worked through for the administration so that it's, it's precise in what, from the lobbyist's perspective, to technical amendments, to what's already passed. But those technical details need to be right before they come back to council.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure it didn't impact their development timeline, at least to begin early in the fall. I think many of my other questions have been answered, but thank you again for your interest in providing this great need, especially within South Harrisburg. I like your logo, design. I'm really excited. So thank you.
Vice President Green? Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I don't have many questions. I look forward to the project. I kind of got to speak with you a little during the planning commission meeting. I love the location. I love that we're not just looking all in the same area. I love the style of it. So I really look forward to seeing it come together.
Councilman Mattson?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this as well, and especially the housing legislation being utilized. Question I had was, as you're having conversations, because increasingly we're seeing elder care is becoming more and more of an issue. And we're sort of talking about as you're dealing with various nonprofits and community agencies that are dealing with this. Are you seeing more, and this is just out of my own curiosity, are you seeing more interest in seniors needing housing? Or is it still more like families or both?
Actually, you hit it. You hit the nail around the head. A lot of the community partners that we've talked to, I would say roughly about six out of the 10 that we've talked to have specifically asked us to consider making anywhere between 50 to 60% of the units available for senior housing opportunities. So the senior housing needs currently in the city are pretty large, understanding that we at Fernandez Realty Group, we used a HUD study that was done at the beginning of late 2020, early 2021. We're currently in the process of securing an agency to come in and do a study for the city of Harrisburg, predominantly in the zip code where the project will be, with the closest four zip codes. So we are currently, I think we're signing the dotted line on that study tomorrow, and we should have that study done by the beginning of August. So it's a pretty quick study. We're hiring an agency right outside of Philadelphia to come in and do the study. But we believe that a pretty large portion of this project will be allocated for senior housing, single occupancy. Too early for me to commit to that, Councilman, but I, I think that's really where this project is going to head for the most part.
Just the, your own benefit, are you familiar with 211?
I am.
Yeah, so there's, I believe the website 211 counts.
Yes.
I often use that and I type in the zip code to see what's going on or what the social services call or within every vicinity or area, but.
And a lot of it is seniors-related.
Yep, it is.
Yep.
So, all right, thank you for that. And thank you for the course today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I also am excited. Thank you, your story, your passion for doing this. That's always where it starts, is things in our, our past that trigger something to make us want to fulfill a dream or help someone else out. So thank you for sharing that and being vulnerable enough to do so and helping that to push you along. So I'm excited for this. Our senior citizens definitely need a place to stay as well, and I think they're forgotten a lot. And yes, of course, our families do as well, but I think our senior citizens are suffering more than we think. And for you to see that and understand that, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any other comments from anyone? So this concludes the, the committee business for the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we will move to the.
Oh, wait, sorry. I need to recommend that this be added to the agenda.
For the legislative session?
Yeah.
Thank you. Noted. Next, we will move to the Public Works Committee. Chair Mattson?
President Bowers, I'll just let the previous presenters take their time. Okay, you guys ready?
Good evening, Council. Percy Bullock, Engineering Department, Project Manager. Wes Heisley. We're asked to come by. Meetings with the public to give an update in the status of State Street, where it's at currently.
Speaking to.
Right. And Wes, Wes was going to take over.
Good, good evening, Councilman. My name is Wes Heisley. As Percy said, I am the consulting engineer working on this project with Percy and with the city of Harrisburg in general. What I'd like to do this evening is give you a brief synopsis of what has occurred so far. Give you a little bit of background. Most of you are familiar with the projects, but, but many of the people in the audience who are paying attention at home may not be. So unfortunately, I, I kind of don't have any projector, but since that's not going to, going to happen, I'm going to have to wing it. Project, the project design began in 2018. The project was led for bidding in June 24th of 2021. The contract was awarded to Kinsel Construction in July of 2021, almost a year ago. The construction on the State Street project began in April of this year, beginning of April of this year. On April 20th, a cease and desist order was issued to Kinsel Construction due to the residents' concerns about future parking. On, on April 27th, exactly a week later, after a video conference between the city and the contractor, five engineering directors were issued to the contractor, which allowed him to continue working as we went back and looked again at some of the design to try and get a better design together and make sure that the, the residents' concerns have been taken into consideration. At that time, we came before council and we, we proposed a three-phase program with the first phase being going back to the residents and meeting with them to understand their, their concerns and to get a sense of exactly what kind of redesign would be appropriate in this case. We have since done that. Because the State Street is a state route, however, we, we also engaged PennDOT to determine what parameters and design measures would be acceptable to them. We spent probably an hour and a half, my, my design staff and I's on the phone with the directors of District 8 and some of their people. And we went point by point. Do you like curb bump outs? Do you, do you want to see parking lines? What kind of signage would be appropriate according to PennDOT? It was a very long and detailed engineering conversation, but it was extremely productive. We got a, a, an exact sense of what they were expecting and they got a very good idea of what direction we were headed. The one major item that came out of that was the lane configuration. At the very beginning, PennDOT said we will not even consider anything that, that does not show two lanes during peak hours. That led us to do the five-lane design, which, which many people are familiar with. State Street in general has a 77-foot, 78-foot cross-section. If you look at that from the perspective of the number of lanes, you can have seven lanes at 11 feet. So that's about 77 feet. So what we did was take the two parking lanes where they're at now. Originally, they had been eight feet. We kept those parking lanes where they're at. Now, each one of the five lanes in that cross-section left take up 12 feet. So what we, what we proposed doing was to take the travel lanes to in each direction and make them 11 feet, narrowing them by one feet. Take the center lane, take two feet out of that. That gained us six feet in that, in that whole cross-section. We took three feet on each side and put it right next to the parking lot or the parking area to provide a buffer. So based, based on that conversation, we held three public meetings. The first three public meetings were on June 2nd and June 6th. We presented to the residents the basic design concept that, that five-lane cross-section, narrow lanes. In addition, we polled the attendees and asked some open-ended questions. There were 55 responses to those questions. The first, the first open-ended question was, what do you see as the most pressing safety concern along State Street? And the second was, what could the city of Harrisburg do to improve safety in this area of the city? We took the answers from that and adjusted our design information and added design features and measures that were specifically done to target those concerns. We then generated a, a draft layout, which we presented at the meeting on June 22nd. At that meeting, we also added a poll question, questionnaire. We polled the attendees and asked the following five questions. How well do you think the city has listened to the community's needs and concerns? How well do you think the city has listened to your family and personal needs and concerns? How well do you think the proposed plan does to address the community's comment? And how well do you think the proposed plan addresses your household needs? And finally, how well do you think the community has been kept informed during the redesign process? I was surprised at some of the scoring on that. But when you, when you consider the fact that most of the participants that were satisfied with the job that was being done did not show up on the third meeting, you get a much better sense that the scores, which ranged from about 3.4 for the first one to about 2.5 for the, how well do you think the proposed plan addresses your household needs? So they are what they are. Those are the statistics. Where we go from here, the plan preparation and approvals is part of the Phase 2 of the originally proposed design. Based on the feedback from the public meeting and design limitations imposed by PennDOT and the Federal Highway Administrations, we are preparing revised construction drawings. In addition to the actual redesign, several other behind-the-scenes issues need to be addressed, including PennDOT approvals, traffic signal permits, school zone permits, revised specifications. And there's, there's a whole list of those items I'd be happy to provide to you, but they're very long and boring. The, those things have to occur in addition to providing these construction or preparing construction drawings, the revised construction drawings. Once those drawings are prepped, they go through an internal review. Once that internal review's done, we issue them to the reviewing agencies, PennDOT mainly. and Harrisburg City, and we will consolidate whatever comments we get back from that, revise the drawings accordingly. And they will be the drawings that we then send to the contractor for their consideration. Because the contractor had already been bid and contracted to do the work, this, the, the legal position that we are in will require the contractor to get on board with some of the changes. So there'll, there'll be a term of negotiation that has to occur between the city and the contractor to determine the price and delivery dates. That, I, what that looks like exactly, I don't know. That's going to have, depend on a lot of other factors. But ultimately, once that is, those revises, once those changes and revised revisions are done, then the contractor, then the contractor will be able to continue the work. The next page you'll see is deadline impacts and the following is budget impacts. The deadline impacts, that one is committed to having the revised plans for the, ready for the 2022 construction season. However, I need to caution you because there is a lot of stuff that has to happen between now and the end of the construction season. Officially, with PennDOT, the construction season ends on October 30th. If we go into construction, if we are in construction as of November 1st, special waivers have to be issued to the contractor to do the work until the following April. Those waivers are not necessarily hard to get, but there is an additional process to go through at that point. The other thing I wanted to bring up to your attention is that PennDOT has included in this contract $1.6 million for a mill and overlay at State Street, which is huge. That's, that's a, a major development on this project. What that does, however, though, because our line striping is going to need to be established right after the paving is done, the overlay paving is done, that means our stuff has to be approved before the overlay paving is started, so that when the overlay is completed, the contractor can come through and put the line work in that, at that time. You don't delay that by day. That has to be done immediately following. So there's a, a guy painting straights on the road that is following the paver down the road, literally. So obviously, again, that, that information has to be, be available to the guy doing the line striping so that he knows what to do. As for the redesigned budget impacts, there are two impacts. First is to the design fees. At this point, we have spent approximately $41,000 on design. We project that we will probably spend another $45,000 to $46,000 to finish the design. In addition to that, preliminary cost estimates show that the additional cost for the work on the project will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $450,000 to $500,000 in addition to the $1 million that's already allotted for. With that concludes my, my brief, and I am happy to answer any questions as long as you don't make them too hard.
Thank you for that. So the one piece, I want to go back to the contractor. I know you said you can't get into too many details. Sounds like this contractor has a lot of leverage over the situation. Essentially, if they say, oh, we like the way that it was before, we would largely have to accept that or if not, squander a lot of money?
No, they, they can't, they can't follow through because of the way the, the construction management is set up. They have to follow what the construction managers are requiring. And right now, the construction managers have said, here's what you can and here's what you can't do. After the redesign is done and PennDOT approves the project, they have to follow what PennDOT has said. This is, this is a public project. So they have to follow what the public has said this project will look like.
All right.
But, but the contractor, you're right, the contractor does have a lot of leverage because we are diverting major from the original plan, which he has already bid on and accepted. So moving forward, if there are items that are to be included newly into the contract, there's a negotiation process he has to go through and we have to go through with him to determine what the costs of those should be. And part of that allows for additional compensation as a result.
Okay. So if I'm hearing you clearly, if we ask them to do things they didn't initially agree to or that they successfully bid on, we have to negotiate with those prices are like?
Correct, correct. And PennDOT does, this, this is not, this situation is, is not completely unheard of within PennDOT. It, it does happen occasionally. And just with, with just about every project within PennDOT, there are unforeseen issues that arise where the contractor has to provide something that he hasn't bid on. And there, there's, there's a paperwork process and a proving process that the contractor has to go through to show what his costs would be or will be. And then he gets to include profit and other fees in with that as a result. And then that becomes the price if it's accepted, if it's accepted by the owner, which the owner would be Harrisburg City and PennDOT.
Yeah. I believe I understand that. As we're talking about this, just because we're on the topic now, does anybody have any questions on the contractor piece? It's up later, let me know. Percy, a question for you is initially, how much did the project cost?
Just, excuse me, just short of a billion dollars.
Okay. And potentially, what are we looking at it costing?
An additional $500,000.
And ideally, when would you have this before council approved, given that there's some time sensitivity? It sounds like around PennDOT's construction season?
At this point, our, can, our, our tentative schedule is that we will have plans ready and available for review in six weeks. That provides the contractor with, that provides PennDOT with one month of review, the contractor with two weeks to invest, and then an additional month to negotiate or no, the opposite. It gives two weeks to negotiate and then an additional month for the contractor to invest and obtain the products, which, which, every single one of those is very, a very aggressive schedule. So getting this on the ground by the end of the year is a possibility, not a probability.
And then just my question is for this listener. But it sounds like with this timeline of negotiations, would something be available to council immediately when we come back from summer break?
No.
You think it'll take longer?
I think it'll take longer. And it depends what the changes are. I compartmentalize what the prior contract was. Most of the money in the prior contract was for things like the curb cuts, the mechanical things, the signs. So most of the money is still being spent. Those are the parts that stay. It was the painting, the lines and the, and the whiffs of things that are changing. So with the bike lane configuration that's changing. So I don't know what the money coming back is, but as we are the ones who let the contract out for bid, agreed to a price, and we are the ones who pulled it back, I don't think it's surprising that we've left the leverage with the people we've already given the contract to. And the industry has just changed with everything else. But, but until I see what the specifics are, you know, I, I don't know where that, where that half a million dollars comes from.
But it sounds to me like we're gonna anticipate some sort of reallocation.
I don't know how to do it without one. So I think that's actually the mechanism by which it comes back to you. You don't generally vote on bid contracts. The bid is, you appropriate money and the contract goes out for bid. Now there's not, there's insufficient appropriation. It's gotta come back to the council, get an appropriation to go forward.
So I'll, I'll open up to my colleagues after this. A number of us on this council approved this project some years ago. And it's a little frustrating to hear after some heavy vetting and a lot of discussions that, you know, we have to spend an additional half a million dollars on this project. What went wrong? And what are the lessons learned here? And how do we make sure that that doesn't happen again?
Well, from when I came out in April, I took a personal note. Probably forced that. Though it was me. Once we reviewed it, that's when ball started rolling, I guess you want to say backwards. And the concerns of the citizens were brought in a case here. And I thought that was, unfortunately, this is an ugly situation, but it's a necessary. As you heard from the outcry of the public, which I'm glad it came out, fortunately, they got to voice their opinions. I believe it was June 14th meeting. Oh, everybody wanted to be introduced to them. That being said, they were bringing to us our plan of action, as you noticed. Beat the public on three of minis, give them opportunity to come out and see what we can do for them, best we can with what we have results of. Our biggest problem was we couldn't budge past PennDOT's variances. They put on a plate, that's Mr. Wise said earlier, I'm sorry, that, hey, you have this to work with. You're not changing this. Work within it. So that's where we're at. That's what made it harder to work with. Stick in the room and give you five lanes. You can't move from these five lanes. And at that meeting, we presented a preliminary optional plan. They immediately told us, no. Had a plan to go on for a long shoot. Said, no. Go back to drawing table. So that's what extended. I can't say exactly the second part, what we learned from here, because at the prior readings of the prior information that was set by the prior staff, they went through the same vetted process. All one night just went through. Present information to the public, they give the public the opportunity to speak. Then counsel, counseled an opportunity to respond. What happened there, of course, I wasn't here. I can't respond to nobody else's situation mentally. Thought of, but nobody anticipated. I counseled as well backlash from the public once it stopped. The big rush was immediately, nobody rides a bike on State Street. Then it became the streetlights. Now it becomes the speed. And all the information I've read, problems have been speed. No enforcement, those are the biggest issues. And that encompasses everything. Not enough this, not enough that. So it just builds up worse and worse and worse. I can't answer what the resolution is, especially when you went through the correct process. You hit every dot and every T. And at the end, it still looks ugly. Sorry.
Yeah. So from my recollection, I'll let me, my colleagues chime in. Involved at the time was this was part of a larger package within Vision Zero.
100% hear that, 100% agree that, but each large package has its individual.
Correct. It noted, oh, understood. And it was red, but it was, I'm not trying to defend us, but I guess it was just.
Not blaming either.
No, no, I'm not taking it that way. I just, for me, I think the lesson learned here is instead of making some massive package, the way that it was done, it should have been broken down into these smaller pieces so that it could have been vetted more carefully by everybody in community. And I know that there were, I know we did our due diligence to review it all as well, pretty thoroughly. But it's just frustrating. I'm sure it's gonna be frustrating for the public to hear, you know, projects being delayed and it's gonna cost an extra million dollars.
If I could add to that, I think from my understanding of the situation, I think one of the main drivers was the comprehensive plan that was originally approved in draft. And the fact that, and how that fit in with the Vision Zero project. So there was, there was a lot of emphasis, a lot of priority given to certain things that may or may not have been appropriate at the time. They were appropriate at the time. But now you've, you come forward of COVID and now the priorities look a lot different. Things, the situation looks a little bit different. Do people ride bikes on, on State Street? In my mind, that's kind of irrelevant. The question is, do we want to provide facilities for the bikes on State Street? In the comprehensive plan, it calls for that. So those were the parameters the original engineer was given in order to work and to try and work within the framework that PennDOT required. They came up with the, the adverse parking scheme that, that arose. So again, PennDOT said you have to have two lanes during peak hours. So in the morning, the peak hours are in that. So that's when the parking was restricted along the north side of State Street. Southbound or, or on the south side in the evenings, while traffic was coming out. So again, that, that's what drove a lot of the decision-making and a lot of priorities within the design that was originally there. I, I think moving forward, I, I think City Council has to be clear on what priorities take precedence. Does the comp plan mean more than the residential concerns? I think in this case, the comp plan took precedence over what the residents wanted. And that became part of the, the larger package. So again, I think moving forward, keeping track of the priorities and making sure the priorities are appropriate is is the way you need to look at it.
Yeah, I'll add one last thing here. I don't know if I want to go down the whole rabbit hole that is the comprehensive plan, but I think Director Knight in his presentation touched on it with neighborhood planning and sort of micro seeing, hey, what's in the comprehensive plan and engaging the community more. And again, per this rating, it seems like, and it's been a consistent theme with the city, is that we have to do a better job communicating with our residents. I don't feel like the city government's doing an adequate job in that respect. Working on, keep working on until we get there. But certainly, we should, as we look through the comprehensive plan and that micro-targeting specific neighborhoods, really, really drill down as to what that neighborhood wants to see and planning for their community forwards. I'll leave it at that. And because this does touch on public safety, I will start with Councilman Rodriguez, far left.
Thank you, Chair Mattson. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening. I just want to start off by saying the work behind the comp plan also had a lot I just want to start off by saying the work behind the comp plan also had a lot of resident buy in and feedback. So granted, I understand what you're saying, but also adhering to the complaint is also adhering to the residents' needs and wants in their specific areas. It was something that was worked on for quite some time. And although I wasn't on council, I'm proud of the work that they done just to achieve that. Because it was quite some time since we've had that done. So kudos to the teams on that. Was it not like a part of the funding process to have the bike lanes in initially? Could you break that down for us a little bit?
Part of the funding was through the multimodal grant process, which means it has to have more than one mode of transportation. We haven't gotten rid of the bike, the bicycles. We just provide lane sharing for the bikes instead of dedicated lanes.
Okay, so there'll be definitely somewhere where our cyclists can. Because I'm sure you guys are aware that quite a few cyclists have been struck as of recently. And it's concerning from a public safety standpoint. And a lot of the residents in state sheet are hundred percent correct. They don't ride bikes, but there are residents coming to and from different parts of the city that may. So just trying to pretty much, you know, take everything into consideration on that standpoint. But thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilman Daniels.
I don't.
Councilmates.
Thank you. I'll I'll just start and we did do a lot of work over the last few years on on this project where I think a lot of the residents' concern came in is with the delay from the time there was the passage of an ordinance to when work started. Then you couple that with, I think the feedback we heard from what the initial meetings and from residents was that the residents along State Street did not feel the same care that the residents along Second Street received when the project commenced. I think that's where we initially heard a lot of the concerns because residents, while they may not have attended all of the meetings back in 2018, have been apprised when they saw the work being done on Second Street, the news coverage and the way that residents were notified was completely different from the conversations that conversations that surrounded the construction beginning on State Street. What we heard here where residents were awakened by bullhorns from the police that they needed to move their vehicles. I think that is not a way for a project to commence. And I think that was, that also led to a lot of the concern that we heard from residents along State Street. I think we have a lot of projects going on. The in the the transition of administration and a lack of communication from project managers, the city to residents in both projects led to a lot of the concern that we heard. But I remember loud and clear from our meetings with the residents on State Street that that was one way, not to start a project off properly with awakening them to move those vehicles. But and then the other pieces to remember as we had those discussion was because these are multimodal funds. We have to adhere to, it's multimodal funds coupled with a state road. We have to work with Pendot on how these pieces all move forward. So the schedule that you outline, as you noted, I think the probability of it happening this year is is there is is out there. But all of the other work is still continuing. So how much, how much are we looking to expend of all of the funds based upon with the curb cuts and the ADA compliance that was being done versus just the milli didn't paving and then the lining? Because I think there's the immense amount of work was going to, it's still being constructed, right? All of this, the curb cuts and the ADA compliance can still be done along State Street before we do some of the road improvements.
Currently, the ADA ramps are being finished off. The next stage is restoration, basically putting, filling in where the ADA ramps were up to that. That's the next stage. At that point in time. Field or all our sidewalk issues.
Right, so in terms of the letting of the contract, right, we had a million dollars. How much of that million dollars is being taken care of with just the ADA compliance and the?
I don't know percentages. I couldn't tell you, I can't tell you percentages. I do know that the contractor has purchased because of supply chain issues. He purchased all the physical items he needed to to complete the project, which included 399 curb stops and all the signage and signage posts. So all that stuff has been purchased and is available. Much of that stuff will no longer apply. So it is, that needs to be part of the negotiation with the contractor, whether contractor can can recover some of those costs by selling them back to the original supplier or whether the city can use them in in another arena. So you know that.
Or whether the contractor thinks the marketplace is better for him than us and can recover more than paid for.
Right.
So so I mean, that's part of the negotiations, how are they may hold for what we made them buy.
Right.
And then who, where where do the materials go? Do they go to us to deal with and sell or reuse or they go to them? Do they go back to the manufacturer?
Right.
But everything's a hot commodity right now.
Right, no, absolutely. So what I'm, but you said, you can't give us a percentage of how much.
I I don't know how that breaks down, I'm sorry.
Okay.
What we're at in terms of our expenditure right now is 331. If you're asking for costs we've expended at right now.
Right, right now. And when they complete all of the sidewalks, how much do you anticipate of that contract being being spent with the work that can be done prior to the halt?
That would totally be short of a million dollars at that point. No, he's just asking.
Prior to them having to stop work because of where we are in a cease and desist process. How much more?
Oh, we have six, six seventy. No, no, how much more?
Right, so let's rephrase it, I'll rephrase it. Contract was a million dollars.
Right.
We spent 331,000 dollars so far. Right. When they finish all the work that can be completed prior to the, now that there's a cease and desist on additional work, the work that can be done, how much will we have spent?
We have one more bill of 140 some, I believe. So three, 330 plus 140.
Forty, or so, roughly, roughly about half of the contract. Okay, all right, thank you.
I give back the more.
Okay, thank you.
That, President Bowers.
Thank you. I have a question and I think two comments. I'll start with my comments. Thank you for being here. The reason why I added this to the agenda tonight was because I wanted to provide the members of the public with an opportunity to note the follow up and next steps necessary after the three public meetings. In reference to the public meeting, there were. When you walked into each of the meetings, there were, I I don't know if they were Dowwood employees, maybe about three, three different people that potentially greeted you, asked you to make sure you had the appropriate materials. Now, were were they Dowwood employees?
They were part of the engineering contract. They were actually from Cosmos Engineering. The greeters were.
Thank you for clarifying, because I know we had asked about your diversity compliment in the past. And I wanted to know if the individuals were rather diverse. I wanted to know if they weren't your employees or a subcontractor. So thank you for clarifying that. And I really, I'm, I guess I'm really confused by the budgetary impacts, but numbers are not my forte. So I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee chair to maybe dive into that a little bit further. But again, thank you for clarifying the next steps.
That, Vice President Green.
All right, thank you all. Thank you for being here tonight. I have a couple, I guess, comment, question, thoughts, a little bit of everything in here. So first, I'll kind of kind of dive into the timeline of the State Street project a little bit. So I know city council was presented with Vision Zero, including the State Street project as well as some information on the State Street project. And then once that was passed, it didn't have to come back before us. And things were changed. There were changes made in December of 2020 when we weren't in session. It was between the time that we left for the holiday before a January meeting that some changes were approved and posted onto the website. So that's just kind of some some clarification on that. And honestly, as the solicitor said, if it wasn't for a need for for more money, you guys wouldn't have to come before us again. And if it wasn't for the public's outcry, we would have never heard more about this project until it was completed. So that's just kind of how things are handled, like how how you guys got back here. And I think why some of the changes were made. And maybe there can be a change in the process that if substantial changes are made, it does come back before city council. Just to make for sure that, you know, we don't get these big changes that the public's not aware of, the council's not aware of that that happen and then construction starts and we find ourselves in this situation. Because that's quite unfortunate. So now, as we kind of look at where we are now, you said the total cost of the project, we're looking at going from about a million to about 1.5 million.
Broad, yes, yes.
All right. And most of these, this cost increase is due to the fact that we purchased materials that we will no longer need for this project.
No, I I I think the additional costs that you're seeing are a result of the change in the types of measures that we're proposing. The the original measures used, use the curb stops to isolate the bike lanes. A lot of the money was being spent on paint and paint eradication, different elements like that. We've moved into a different type of design, which now most of the money is actually being spent on the raised, the what's called thermoplastic, the sidewalks, basically the raised sidewalks with the with the brick patterns. That's where a majority of the the additional funds are going. It's rather expensive, but it's really needed as part of this design work. And then there'll be additional costs associated with the the permitting and adjustments of the traffic signals.
Okay, if we can get maybe a cost out of how much the raised the crosswalks cost.
Very, very preliminary numbers. And I'll be happy to come back to 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 city council and give you a breakdown as soon as we get a final design.
Okay, I mean, maybe you and I can take some time and sit down and kind of go over some of these numbers. I guess I'm more of a I like to see it type person. And I can't see the numbers right now. I'm kind of just like.
To estimate that number, to give you an idea of estimate that number, I took the three biggest elements that we are proposing, costed those out based on current Pendot numbers and then added 20% to that.
Okay.
So that's where that number came from. I figured about 20%. There's going to be about 20% additional costs in in odds and ends and and other elements that need to be added. The biggest elements are are the additional signage and the crosswalks.
Okay, and so I guess for for the benefit of the public that may not have been at the State Street meeting, I know we don't have a visual of what the changes are, but most of the changes that are going to be part of this new redesign include slightly raised brick patterned crosswalks at certain intersections along with flashing lights at certain intersections that people can push to show that they're crossing the street.
Correct.
Along with, I believe you called them shark bite.
Right, right, so so in advance of a crossing, there are shark teeth, which are just the triangles, which which basically visually it presents a kind of like teeth popping out of the ground. So visually, it gives you that kind of stop for a second just to see what's going on here. It makes you pay attention to what's going on in front of you. And therefore, chances are much less that you're going to hit the person that's crossing the sidewalk at that point.
Okay, do we believe that the the lighting is sufficient enough on State Street that when it's dark outside, people can see these shark teeth?
That's a different issue. That is something that we will need to discuss at some point. The lighting, the lighting according to Pendot and ASTO standards, the lighting at two of the four intersections is adequate. The other two intersections, it's just under adequate. The lighting gets measured by luminosity and intensity, which I'm not sure how to explain it, quite frankly, because I don't understand it very well myself. Our lighting, our lighting guy tried to spend 20 minutes to explain it to me. Basically, it is the the amount of illumination. How intense it is at one location. So if it's spread out over, you know, this, this area here is very illuminated and it's also very well distributed. Out there, there's areas that are very well illuminated, but it's not distributed quite right. There are other issues, vegetation and so on. The the issue with not addressing the lighting at this point, no lighting was in this contract. So putting lighting into this contract right now would be a huge expense and would probably cost the city twice as much as it should.
Okay, then perhaps we should look at other things, such as, as you kind of mentioned, vegetation, making sure trees are cut back properly. Those are things that are within the city's purview, that we have the the mechanism to do in house. And I guess that's more talking to the administration itself about making sure that the trees are cut back, making sure that the grass in the area is not six feet tall.
We're happy to provide some recommendations in that regard. Our lighting guy is fantastic and he he is already, he's already taken the time to 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 tell me which trees actually need cut back and how how they should be addressed. He feels that there are certain lights that could be intensified to a greater degree and that would provide better spread. There are other lights which he feels are not appropriately located. Like I said, there are things that can be done to address the lighting, but it's not, it can't be part of this contract because it would just be too expensive.
Understood, understood. I'm not just looking at this contract per se, I guess, because I'm talking to the city engineer along with the project engineer. So from a city engineering perspective, there are things that we need to work on outside of just what's in this contract.
Absolutely, we've already stepped up to the plate with that, add net on to Mr. Bing's menu of things where staff do for us. So we're going to, we're starting to cut trees now, not down, but cut limbs, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think that's important to make sure the public knows as well that along with the signs and the street paint and the raised crosswalks that will be coming later in the year or whenever, you know, we're able to to get the project started, that there are things that we can do now to start addressing some of these issues. I think it's important to to let that be known. And then some of the questions that I have for Dowwood are outside of this project and and speak more to the the overall cost of engineering in the city. So I don't know if that's appropriate to speak about right now. I know you all came back for for more money for engineering department that I'm not sure if we 100% need because I hear that we might not actually need that money added to our engineering budget. So perhaps you all can can come back at a at our next meeting, which won't be until August, but come back to give us a full breakdown of our engineering spend for city services, for project services, and then our estimated, our estimated lookout for the rest of the year so that we can kind of understand where we're at with our engineering spend. I understand you might not be prepared for that tonight since we're talking about the State Street project. But as we're looking forward into next year's budget, as we know, this is, this is really budgeting season. It's not budgeting hearings, but it's budgeting season as we start to look at how much money are we going to need for next year? Which positions are we looking to fund such as a city engineer for next year? We need to know what we've spent and then kind of estimating what we're going to need to spend for next year as well.
Yes.
That's all I have. Just like, thank you.
That, Councilman Rawls.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. Actually, my questions have been asked and answered, so thank you.
Those are the best kinds.
That, any other additional questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the work of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you Chair Matson. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone in the far right section that would like to offer public comment? Reminder, um please state your name and your address. If you're not comfortable sharing your address, uh please share the vicinity in which you live. And you have two minutes to share your comments. Thank you.
Alright, my name is James Ben Murray, 1616 Revere Street, Harrisburg. I've been there for like 24 years. Before that, I was on Ralston Street. Before that, I, I've been here. I mean, I've been Harrisburg all my life. But that idea they got about building this apartment on 14th and 15th Mark, worst idea in the city. They didn't tell any of us residents about this. Biggest issue with that area is school sits perpendicular with another street. All the traffic for PennDOT, Labor and Industry, uh Sylvan Heights, the other school in the area, that's all right there. There isn't a day that goes by during the school year that there isn't a fight. Parents, not the children. Because you can't get your kids out the car and get them to school. When, when, when one car stops to let the kids out, it blocks the traffic from oncoming from the, from the perpendicular street and Sycamore. That's just one car. We're talking about every single student. I would advise y'all to hold off on this. Go check out that traffic in the fall before this is that's that. And also Plains event on August 6th, All You Can, we'll be giving away free stuff, free uh school supplies and essentials to the kids on August 6th from 12 to 4, 7th and Rad. There's some things that we're looking for in addition to stuff the bags. I'll leave some flyers over here and y'all can snatch them up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the far right section that would like to offer public comment?
There we go, okay. Hi, my name is Brandon Basem, 3022 uh North Third Street, Harrisburg. I wanted to say first of all that the uh Hershey School coming here, I think is a fantastic project. I'm pretty excited about that one as well as the um apartment after that. I'm sure I've been vocal enough and not at all happy about the State Street project. I'm kind of disappointed that we're spending a lot more money for a lot less protection. Balancing the concerns of the residents, which I understand the city has to do. I'm curious which concerns weigh heavier than the grievous injury in lives of people who were lost there? And this isn't just people coming through versus the residents, it's residents who are dying in that area. It's people walking, it's people riding bikes to work. And I, I really don't like the framing of this as residents versus bike riders because we hand out thousands of bikes every year. I've seen them riding around. They have to ride unsafely. When people ask, are people riding bikes on State Street? The answer is, there's nowhere safe to ride a bike. If you put a bike lane in, they use it, they be protected. As it is now, if you're wondering if people ride bikes east of Cameron, the answer is yes. Need proof of that, look at who's dying because we have the numbers. Honestly, except for that, I'm but um there is a thing I did want to put out. Uh they have identified the young lady who was killed that we were going to spike out for a couple of weeks ago. She's a friend of mine, her family's up from Peru right now. We're going to be running a vigil on Saturday at the site of the accident on Cameron, uh Market Street. We're going to be trying to collect some funds to help them in their search for justice for their daughter while they're staying here for a little while. Uh Saturday at noon till whenever it goes to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the far right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, no one is in the other right section, anyone in the middle that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, my name is Jackie William. I reside at 65th Minnich Street. Born and raised in Harrisburg in 1972. My family have lived on Minnich Street since the 50s. Have three homes on Minnich Street. My grandmother passed away. We also have some other neighbors. Of course, on that block, there's been an evolution of now having about maybe twelve homes back on that block. But as you all know in the city of Harrisburg, as far as it doesn't matter, it a lot of traffic, a lot of parking, um that people need. One of the concerns, and I will be honest, I'm, I was excited about this project too when I seen it in the paper. We didn't know though, however, that a service entrance was going to be across the street directly from that. And that there will be two in the alleyway and two uh parking spots taken directly across the street. One of the questions is, why do they get to take the right of that curb? Without us understanding that from the sense of how that impacts us. Say that you want to take curbs up the street and across the street, also up the street. Which is thus up the street potentially. And I know, and we talked about this, that that's not fair to us. We have to park, we want to park in front of our homes, we want to bring our groceries in, laundry. You don't want to have to park over the street and carry those things into our homes. We already have enough challenges already. The other issue that we see with the service entrance is we're, you know, want to be trash. You know, trash across the street directly from our home. We have houses across the street. Didn't have trash or service entrances or things of that nature where there are concerns too. And I did expect the same too, that people will start to park in there or do bad things in there that we have not had. Where I've grown up at, Minnich Street has been a hidden gem. It's been safe, quiet, and very peaceful. I moved back into the city, um graduated from Harrisburg High. I recently just got my master's degree. I understand how this works. I know this is a David and Goliath situation and I'm not saying that I'm not for this school. But I think there needs to be some further consideration with the residents that live there, not midtown, not Camp Curtain, Minnich. See how this is going to really impact us and the elderly people that live there, that have to go out their homes every day to be able to get back to their homes.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in this middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, President. Council members, my name is Louis Blutz. I live in 1937 Market Street. My main concern, several years ago, I came up to council as well as the president regarding the Camp Curtain Historical District being designated as um hollow ground from its history of um being uh if we designate it, and I'll help everybody with this. We designate it as a hollow ground, we get um added to a subsequent, um a Civil War trail. That's go south and it stops right now at Gettysburg. But we can extend that Civil War trail to Harrisburg. Um I'm working on a, a replica, flag replica program with the Civil War Museum. And we need to, as a community, we need to identify ourselves and of what and who we are before they'll identify ourselves, us as, you know, hollow ground. They know it. Everybody else knows it. We just have to designate ourselves as to what, what it is for ourselves. And then they'll support it. And my project, I'll get, I'll show you in, in August when you come back. But I want to work on the designation first, so we can really go deeper. And get that support that we need from, you know, from federal government as well as the county and state. It's important that we look at ourselves, figure out who and what we are, and then we can move forward. Um the Camp Curtain Church now rep- represented the own church built as a Civil War memorial in the country, was the first one. And that has a story also. Right now it's being overgrown. I figured that that's kind of disrespectful along the way. There were people that purchased it. I mean, I think there's like three people that actually purchased it, but they found out that they couldn't do nothing with it because of its stature and its historical significance. So it's up to us as residents to look at that project, to look at that building and identify what and who we are about it, so we can benefit from it. We can benefit from it, it's just that we need to know who we are first, so we can move forward. So I'll, I will, I will talk with um Honorable Danielle Bowman, Bowers, I mean, and any other council person to really look at it. And also, um Jeffrey, you know, Mike, he wants to do some preservation stuff. I think that maybe if you get some of his energies and do something that's really significant in terms of preserve it.
Sir, your time has expired.
Serving a whole, you know, whole
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, anyone on the left? Okay, seeing no one. The time is 8:34 PM. Our work session is adjourned. I was going to ask, would everyone be okay with the five minute break? I know been moving, but okay, we'll come back in five minutes to begin our legislative session. Thank you. Our caucus to just review our agenda and then we will move into our legislative session. Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Parker will lead our roll call. The invocation will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez. Communications this evening, uh, were supposed to come from our city treasurer, uh, the Honorable Dan Miller. However, he, um, had to leave. So I was hoping he would be able to answer some of the questions that have been recurring over the past, uh, few weeks. So hopefully he will be able to be present during our July twenty-sixth meeting. We will then, uh, open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Then we will have approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June twenty-eighth. If you have a moment, please review those minutes. Uh, again, I will be making a motion to, uh, revise the, uh, movement of Resolution Thirty-seven to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Then we will have reports of committees. We will hear from Chair Daniels on the, uh, public hearing and work session that was heard early, held earlier this evening, followed by Chair Mattson on the work session that was held earlier. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage this evening. Next, we have resolutions. So Resolution Twenty-seven of twenty-twenty-two, as we noted, um, during discussion last week, it's a technical amendment, so, uh, we will not, uh, suspend the rules for discussion. As our last action was taken, uh, during our June fourteenth legislative session, so we will vote. Uh, Resolution Thirty-five of twenty-twenty-two will be up for a vote. Resolution Thirty-six of twenty-twenty-two, uh, will be voted upon. We will table Resolution Thirty-seven of twenty-twenty-two until our, uh, July twenty-sixth meeting. Resolution Thirty-eight of twenty-twenty-two will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Resolution Thirty-nine of twenty-twenty-two will be voted upon. It is a digital signatory. Uh, we've done these before. Director Kelly is present. If anyone has any questions, but we will vote. Resolution forty of twenty-twenty-two, um. Okay, uh, Ms. Valmer is present, I think. Okay, um, so if there are any questions here, it's, it looks similar to the, uh, Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant application that we voted on, uh, last week. Resolution forty-one of twenty-twenty-two, I will suspend the rules for discussion. I'm hoping that, uh, Councilman Rodriguez can just share a little bit about this before we vote. And then finally, we have Resolution Forty-two of twenty-twenty-two, and that will also move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Is there any old business for discussion council members? Okay, under new business, I will just share, uh, the information and update to our legislative calendar for the addition of the July twenty-sixth meeting. And that will be it. Let's get started. The time is eight fifty-two P M. I'd like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Yeah.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, Council President Bowers, and good evening for our part two, everyone. Um, if we could just, uh, take a moment of silence for the victims and their families of the Highland Park Mass Shooting that happened on yesterday, on July fourth, as well as for the, the families that were traumatized yesterday at our Truck Festival here at One Front Street. And for the biker who lost her life, um, Leila Monri, um, if we could take a moment of silence for those three things, please. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Rawls. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
All rise, please.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. As I mentioned, we have, uh, no communications this evening. We will now open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone in the left section that would like to offer public comment? Which should have. Okay, anyone in the middle section?
Good evening again. My name is Butts, Louis Butts from nineteen thirty-seven Market Street. Again, we have, uh, a history legacy that we must uphold to stand strong against evils such as what happened last night. We need to gain respect. By gaining respect is to tell a story, a victorious story. Our Civil War history, the Camp Curtain District is a, uh, uh, victory story of what Harrisburg stands for. Must tell that story of victory, so we can, our children can learn. Our people, uh, their morality can go up, and this is, and it's a great story. I'm gonna be working with, um, the Civil War Museum to tell this story. It's important, but I need city councils' help to help identify the areas in which the story will be told. Um, I appreciate all that you have done, but there's a lot more work to be, else be done. We have a great piece of property that the Hershey, Hershey, Milton Hershey wants to purchase. Think about that, because it's our property. Our incinerator is going Lancaster bar, our incinerator. We want to piece, nail out our city to where our identity goes. What projects and programs are they offering? And we offer those same project, programs that we just, can we just copy their programs? Can we do it ourselves? Why don't, can't they buy steel school? Isn't there other, um, buildings that they can change to fit their, you know, to fit what they need? I mean, it's important that we look at what we're giving up, even though it's free.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing no one, anyone in the right section? Seeing no one, we will move forward with our agenda. Thank you. Moving to the approval of minutes for the legislative session of June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, council members, are there any revisions? I have one. On page three of the meeting minutes under resolutions, um, it should note President Bowers moved Resolution Thirty-seven of twenty-twenty-two to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Just wanted the record to reflect that, uh, because pursuant to our council rule number fifteen, um, the Community and Economic Development Committee is responsible for administering, um, the city's entitlement, the administration of the city's entitlement of C D B G funds, which we heard, uh, earlier today. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, could you please, um, call the roll for the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Mattson.
Yes.
Mr. Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes, thank you. The meeting minutes, the revised meeting minutes, excuse me, are approved. Thank you, council members. We will now move to reports of committee. We will begin with Chair Daniels on the public hearing and work session that was held earlier this evening on July fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Chair Daniels?
Thank you. I'll try to be very brief. Um, the Community and Economic Development Committee met earlier today for both a public hearing and a work session. Um, in the public hearing, we, we reviewed a Resolution Thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-two, which is the resolution approving the twenty-twenty-two annual action plan for the city of Harrisburg for the community development block grant program, home investment partnerships, and emergency solutions grants programs. Um, the presentation was made by, uh, Denise Hill and, um, reflected the, uh, the proposed allocations, um, in, in a global form. The presentation will be available online, uh, for folks to review, and, um, uh, you know, uh, members of the community are invited to, uh, submit comments until the end of tonight regarding the, the plan. Uh, during the work session, we heard from Mr. Jeffrey Knight regarding the work of the Planning Bureau. Uh, we also reviewed Resolution Thirty-five hyphen twenty-twenty-two, which is a land consolidation and preliminary land development plan, um, by the Katherine Hershey School for Early Learning. Um, and, um, that property, that plan had several conditions, four of them, and one of them was a request, uh, was the, the applicant requested to have it the way, which was the requirement for the curb cuts, and our city engineer has agreed that, um, uh, well, our city consult, engineer consulting firm, uh, agreed that, that was okay. So if, uh, any member of council would be interested in making that amendment to the resolution, um, please, uh, feel free to do so. Um, I would recommend for this resolution that we do, um, that we do approve it. Uh, the city is in desperate need for, um, childcare. Uh, the, there are challenges because one of the conditions is a, um, is a street vacation. Uh, we recently, as a council, passed a resolution, uh, reflecting some of our policy positions regarding, um, street vacations. And, um, so I'm a little bit troubled by the fact that we are seeing the plan before the vacation happens to be reassured that the policy priorities of the city in the vacation, uh, ordinance, uh, aren't, uh, you know, uh, were not addressed first, um, prior to us seeing this. But as a city, we are in, um, need, in a lot of need for, um, early learning education opportunities for youth. So, um, this, I would recommend a, a vote to support the resolution, and hopefully in the process, processes that follow, um, some of the concerns will be addressed. Um, Resolution Thirty-six dash twenty-twenty-two is a resolution approving the lot consolidation and pre- preliminary final land development plan for fourteen hundred and, fourteen oh six, six Sycamore Street. Um, it's one of the proposals that have been submitted under our affordable housing plan. It, it's a twenty-three unit building, um, that will provide affordable housing. And, um, this is a, uh, you know, it's a commendable project, and, um, yeah, and I would recommend that we. yeah, and I would recommend that we support this, this proposal. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Chair Daniels. Next, we will hear from Chair Madsen on the work session that occurred earlier, July fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Chair Madsen?
Yes, thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of July fifth, the Public Works Committee received a presentation from the administration regarding state, the state street safety improvement project. Council was given a timeline of events, including when construction began, April fourth of two thousand twenty-two, and when the cease and desist order occurred, April twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-two. The re design phase then started after the disorder, or the cease and disorder started, or she canceled the work. Three meetings were then held on June second, June sixth, and June twenty-seventh to solicit input from the community. A survey was circulated during these meetings as well. And the of note, the comments that the city received is that we had low scores on addressing community comments and household needs. So some lessons to be learned there. Then the committee asked questions of note, largely over concerns over bullhorns when the project was initially started and how the residents felt. And some of the feedback we received, concerns over the funding, logistics on how the project will slow down traffic. And yeah, so further discussion around this project, but that was overall the presentation council received. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chair Madsen. Moving on to ordinances for first reading, we have none. Ordinances for amendment, we have none. And ordinances for final passage, we have none. Resolutions. We'll begin this evening with Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twenty-seven dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the first proposed two thousand twenty-two budget reallocation.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-two? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
No.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mister Madsen.
Yes.
Mister Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
No.
Resolution twenty-seven passes with a vote of five yeas and two nays.
And President Bowers, just because it was a law bureau that requested it, this changes nothing that you previously voted on. This has to do with the requirement of linking the appropriate copy of the legislation to the agenda. What you discussed, voted on tonight is what you discussed last time. An old version was left on the agenda, so we just had to correct it so the public has a document to go back to.
Thank you for clarifying. Next, we have Resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-five dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary land development plan submitted by William Wass on behalf of the Catherine Hershey School for Early Learning Harrisburg to construct a new childcare center and make associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
I would like to make a move to have a condition four removed from the legislation or the ordinance.
Okay, I'm gonna read it since I have it pulled up so we know what we're removing. Okay. The curve cut, the curve cut in ingress and egress access point along North Sixth Street at the to-be-vacated intersection with Delaware Street will not be installed so as to eliminate a vehicular and pedestrian conflict point per the city's Vision Zero program. Ensure smoother traffic flow and allow the establishment of additional on-street parking for use by the proposed project and other nearby uses. Is there a second?
May I just add the parliamentary point?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe you can make this a motion to approve by, but only with conditions one, two, and three, and therefore you don't have to do a formal amendment. So you're not having two motions to vote on.
At one time to consider?
Yeah.
Okay, we can move forward that way. I just wanted to know what was being removed since we were just addressing it as condition number four. Okay, so council members, are we, well, we do have a motion, but there was no second, so, okay. So we will be moving forward with conditions one through three. Everybody okay with that?
Yes, I have a comment, though I have to recuse myself from voting for a future financial contract I have with Milton Hershey Schools.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty-two?
Madam President, so the new way is wording, it will just keep the first three?
Correct, yes. Okay, Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mister Madsen.
Yes.
Mister Majors.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Just for clarification, this is for the vote as is or with keeping the first three conditions?
It is a motion to approve with conditions one, two, and three only.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution passes six zero with Councilwoman Rawls having to recuse herself due to employment obligations.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution thirty-six of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-six dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the lot consolidation and preliminary slash final land development plan for fourteen hundred and fourteen oh six Sycamore Street, submitted by George Fernandez Realty Group L L C to construct a four-story, twenty-three-unit building that will provide affordable housing and make associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirty-six of two thousand twenty-two? I just have one comment. I'm very pleased that an applicant is interested in the affordable housing legislative package. It was something that we worked very hard on, and I'm just glad that although amendments, although amendments are necessary, I'm just glad that an applicant is taking advantage of the program.
Absolutely.
Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mister Madsen.
Yes.
Mister Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. And next, we have Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you read it into the record just for, to note?
Certainly. Resolution thirty-seven dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the two thousand twenty-two action plan for the city of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, C D B G Home Investment Partnerships, Home and Emergency Solutions Grant E S G Programs.
Thank you. Council members, we will table action on Resolution thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-two until our July twenty-sixth meeting. Next, we have Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-eight dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for one oh eight slash one twelve Walnut Street, submitted by Ronnie Ramouni of N and R Group L L C to consolidate three two-story office buildings onto a single parcel and transform the property into an eight multi, into an eight-unit multifamily dwelling, excuse me.
Thank you. Council members, Resolution thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-two will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Next, we have Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the designation of Marita J. Kelly, Director of Financial Management, as the required digital signatory for the city of Harrisburg's recycling development and implementation grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection's curb-side recycling collection program for up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions related to Resolution thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-two? Director Kelly is present. Do you have any questions for her? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mister Madsen.
Yes.
Mister Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution forty of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution ratifying the city of Harrisburg's application to the Department of Community and Economic Development for a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The grant will further the vision of the Reservoir Park Master Plan by funding construction of the Chutes Complex, which will, among other things, expand a parking lot in Reservoir Park, add traffic calming elements to the existing roadway, convert a portion of Reservoir Drive to a walking path, install outdoor adult exercise equipment, and construct a tot lot playground.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions on Resolution forty of two thousand twenty-two? Ms. Vollmer is present. No, seeing and hearing none. Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mister Madsen.
Yes.
Mister Majors.
Yes.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez. And Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution forty-one of two thousand twenty-two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty-one dash two thousand twenty-two. A resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg establishing Hot Spot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'd like to defer to Councilman Rodriguez, our public safety chair, just to provide a brief overview of Hot Spot Saturdays.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. Hot Spot Saturdays is an initiative that residents had come up quite frequently even before I was a councilman. And as you know, the blight distressed properties has really taken its toll on the city. And I wanted to do something about it, but of course, public works is under a different purview, but when it comes to the point of accumulation and rats, a lot of things that we're hearing right here in the chambers of council, then it really becomes a public safety issue, and I wanted to just help any way I could. So I had meetings with the Schwanma, I had meetings with our Dolphin County Commissioners, State Rep Patty Kim, and just wanted to, as well as the mayor's office, and wanted to create an initiative that we could all walk together side by side, not one in front of the other, and really take care of some things. So I've already met with a few groups that wouldn't mind doing the training with the organizations that agree to help. And the good thing about it is the bill, as long as it's conducted appropriately, precise, and volunteers-based, the Schwanma will allow our trucks to do the dumping, and they would provide those resources of no cost, which will be saving the city of Harrisburg a lot of financial gain. And we can use that for other needs of the residents. And there are six dedicated dates. When I was working with this, with former Director Spriggs, and I am now working with this with Mister Griffin, the acting director of Public Works, as well as the mayor and the other entities I named. And just a way to not only create remediation for the issue, but education, so there'll be outreach groups along with the initiative door-to-door, just letting the residents know that there are, you know, individuals that care that not only just one and done ordeal either, this is sustainable. So the six dates, we could also have next year and moving forward continue. And definitely a movement from city council that I feel residents and we all could appreciate and be a part of.
Thank you very much. Do you have the six states to share?
Yes, yes, yes. And I also forwarded the mock itinerary to council as well as the flyer. But as of right now, we're at July twenty-third, July thirtieth, August seventh, August twentieth, September ninth, and September tenth. We're looking to go from ten A M. to two P M. We would definitely like to provide a meal and just a great town for anyone that wants to volunteer as a way to appreciate. But just, I've already walked quite a few areas of the hotspots that Acting Director Griffin had sent, and I think I've sent you a picture or two, and it's just, you know, some areas are, you can't even believe it's possible, but they find little cuts in intricate places throughout the city and hopefully through the remediation, education, and implementation of cameras and, you know, a lot more moving forward, we'll be able to start minimizing and hopefully one day just eliminate the illegal dumping and the blight, trash, litter, et cetera, that plagues the city.
Thank you again. Council members, are there any questions, comments, concerns for either Chair Rodriguez or about the resolution itself?
Yeah, just a comment.
Okay.
I appreciate your proactiveness and really going after this. Happy to go and attend the event with the initiative.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So this ordinance just sets the hotspots Saturdays? Like, are there M O U's between the different organizations that we have?
This is really just a policy resolution that supports the concept of this program. Or no, there's not.
Just the liability on the volunteer form I used off of the solicitor's office from the website, just in case that was in question, but if you have, you know, any other way to go about it, I'd love to work with you on that.
No, I think it's, I think having M O U's between the different organizations would be good because I think having MOUs between the different organizations would be good because.
I, 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 I see what you're saying.
Absolutely.
At the moment, it's a sort of a voluntary collective of stuff. I, we actually made Mister Rodriguez show us the email from Lexwama that said free. Because that's, that's not our experience with Lexwama.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
But I assume they'll have an MOU by the time we get to this, there'll be something that's their lawyers send over and say, hey, what are we doing? But with council support, the administration would then be able to just go ahead and execute. But they would be very basic.
And I wouldn't mind going back to ask if they have anything specific.
Yeah, no, just one question, because so I know it's a great, great initiative, and I know we've, Public Works has done partnership with other volunteer groups in the past. And I guess having city council's name attached brings up some of the same issues for me as well, just in terms of making sure that MOUs are in place. I know Lexwama works very well with volunteer groups that want to do some of these so that won't be any issue with those groups still being able to have those same abilities to do those deliveries with a city council attachment, correct?
But if that will not be an issue, I think you're really just voting in support of the concept and the idea and the model. If, if there are MOUs to come, Public Works has not sent them to us. Mayor's Office, I don't think has anything like that. Something will likely evolve as we're moving forward, just because that normally is what happens.
Okay, so then I guess for Councilor Rodriguez, you mentioned a training. Who will be conducting some of the training? Because I know we have to be mindful of a lot of the blight that happens, sometimes happens on individual private property versus in the streets. So who's going to be doing that training to make sure we're, we don't have anyone?
I reached out to the organizations that already work with private residences such as Love the Hill, Push, Vintage Wasteland, I sent Recycle Bicycle an email. Anyone who, just from the visual standpoint of it already kind of conducts that work and has agreements with either the city or the county, those are the ones I reached out to first. The groups that are doing the cleanups every day. And I have about two that's committed to do the trainings and already submitted their list to Public Works as well as myself on just like gloves, what the glove count for each initiative? What does the bag count for each initiative? How many pickup grabbers do we use for each initiative? So these are entities that already do the work for the city, county, et cetera. So those are the ones, to bless his question, I reached out to very first. Okay.
Yeah, but I think you do want to be thorough in the training because of, you know, the, you want to make sure that volunteers are like not accidentally trespassing or. Well, I'm not.
But to my understanding, a nonprofit wouldn't have the same restrictions as, say, like a public works or a city worker, correct? How does that work typically?
American people are not allowed to go into other people's property.
Right, right.
Very simple, so just because it's trash over there, you just can't walk on and say.
Right, right, right. Well, there'll be literature days before, if not a week before, every area. So if specific maybe resident feels as though they don't want their property, we can put that on the literature as well.
So Public Works is gonna have to drill down on specifics, but they've done it many, many times. So, and so I think, you know, there'll be, I think, some help coming out of Public Works to get down to the ground.
Specifics as far as locations?
Not just locations, but.
What, what, yeah, what people, yeah, what people can and can't do, I think that's.
But that, we have afforded that to you as well from the Schwama. The logistics that are in the itinerary, they had specifics, and I also put that in as well. As far as their purview, what they can and can't do. Majority of the hotspots is, I would say, city ground. So the intention wasn't just to go on people's property. But great point. And however the solicitor's office feels, that needs to be handled. Definitely willing to do the work.
We just have to drill down a little bit, that's all.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? No? Seeing and hearing none, Mister Parker, please call the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Moving too quickly, I'll entertain this motion, I know. To resume our legislative session.
So, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, now, any other questions, comments, concerns related to resolution forty one of twenty twenty two? Seeing and hearing none, Mister Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mister Madsen?
Yes.
Mister Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution forty one passes unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. Our final resolution for this evening is resolution forty two of twenty twenty two. Mister Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution forty two dash twenty twenty two. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development and lot consolidation plan for five twelve through five fourteen North Second Street LLC for the purpose of constructing a new five-story building to include seven residential units and a ground floor commercial retail space, all within the same footprint and area of two long vacant dilapidated structures.
Thank you. Resolution forty two of twenty twenty two will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? I just have one item, just please note that there has been a change in our legislative calendar. Harrisburg City Council will host one additional meeting during the month of July. The public hearing and meeting sequence will be similar to tonight's hearing and sessions. So a public hearing, work session, and legislative session will be held on Tuesday, July twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two, beginning at five thirty PM. Is there any additional new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none. The time is nine twenty nine PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.